Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good evening. I was so excited for this. I was ready for that good morning speech this morning, so, sorry. All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Select Board and Select Board Meeting, Monday, July 17, 2023, Wakebys Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., 02649. It's broadcast live, local cable, Channel 18, streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website. I'd like to convene a joint meeting with the Sewer Commission and the Select Board, and I'd like to start that off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a moment in silence, please? Thank you. All right, so I'd like to convene a joint meeting between the Sewer Commission, discussion and approval of the Comprehensive Watershed Nitrogen Management Plan, CWMP Phase Two, or modifications presentations by the Town Manager and GHD, Inc., of options for joint review and modifications and approval. So, I'd like to, we're adjourned. If your Sewer Commission's present and...
Yes.
Like to open the meeting? All right. So, I guess we jump right in. I'll hand it off to you, Mr. Town Manager.
Right, I'd like to stop by introducing Mark Drainville from GHD, and I'll let him introduce the staff and make the presentation, and we'll move things right along as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us here today. At the June 26 Select Board Meeting, the Town Manager indicated that we would come before you with a menu of options to submit a request for funding this August to further the town's efforts to reduce nitrogen impacts to the coastal estuaries. That is the intent of this presentation today. I will be presenting today Mark Drainville. I'm a principal with GHD. Anastasia Radenko is my colleague. She and I have been working on the update to your plan over the past few years. So, I'm going to give you a little bit of background, and then Anastasia's going to work, walk you through the options. So, the town has an approved watershed nitrogen management plan. This was approved in 2015. It outlines a five-phase approach to meeting the town's nitrogen management goals. The town is currently in the process of completing Phase One. That includes a wastewater treatment facility as well as most of the Phase One sewer-ing area. The plan approval that you received in 2015 requires an update at the end of each phase. We are in the process of doing that update currently. The update includes, we have to, we're drafting a plan, providing, we're going to provide that to the town this summer. It will be finalized in conjunction with the town. It will have to go through a state approval, and ultimately, you'll have an updated plan with that. I do want to note that any submission for SRF funding does require the use of an approved plan in order to get 0% financing. So, your currently approved plan is the 2015 plan, so that's what we're going to be relying on for a submission this August. So, I'm going to give you a little bit of an update on, on the plan that's in progress. So, the, for Wakebys Bay, back in the 2015 plan, that relied on private facilities as well as the joint base Cape Cod facility. Those options have fallen through, and we are currently looking at a municipal facility sighted on the west side of town, and that's going to be reviewed as part of this plan. Plan update, as I said earlier, is going to have to go ultimately through state, state review and approval, okay? So, that's going to be a, a change to your plan for the west side of town. But it will, the update to the plan will include an, an action plan, because that's a bigger change to that side of town than, than you have on the east side of town. So, for Pompaneset Bay, obviously, that's where you have your current, currently constructed wastewater treatment facility and, and new sewer-ing. The options that you're going to see are going to rely on this facility because you have an existing site, and we can rely on that site to do the, to do additional sewer-ing. So, this is a brief summary of the SRF milestones. So, August of 2023, this year, it's August 11th, a, and what's called a project evaluation form is due to the state. That outlines the proposed project that you want considered for funding, and it demonstrates how you meet the, the various goals of the SRF program, okay? A draft priority list, the state calls it an intended use plan, will be issued as early as the end of December or early in next year, and that's where they're going to show the, the cutoff for funding. As an example, this past year, there were 90 projects submitted for funding and 60 received funding, so there is a red line that the state draws at some point for all the projects. So, not everybody gets funded. By June of next year, you will have to have a borrowing authorization that will fund the project that you will, you're going to submit for, for funding in August, okay? If you don't have that, then...
Can I stop you for a quick second?
Oh, sorry, yes.
You just mentioned about not everybody gets funded. So, can you explain a little bit further about that? I, I don't want to stop you in your presentation, but I think that's a big point.
Yeah, so, so the state, the, the, the process involves priority points, and you, depending on the project, you'll get a certain number of points, and at some point, the state has to draw a line because they have limited funding. You will fare well in, in the process. Nitrogen removal is a high priority, and the fact that you have an approved plan that you will use as part of this puts you pretty high up on the list.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, October, a funding application would need to be submitted. The funding application would be the, the, the design of the facilities as well as, it's, it's basically like a loan application. So, there's a lot of paperwork that has to get filled out, too. And then in 2025, in the early part of that, you would go to bid and start construction by July 1 of 2025, okay? That's, this is a, this is a fairly typical, this is a standard sequence for funding, okay? As far as project sizes go, nearly all the projects that were submitted and, and that were approved for funding in this last round were about the size of the last project you had, which is 50 to $60 million range, all right? So... And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Anastasia, and she's going to walk you through the, the various options. There's a series of advantages and disadvantages to all of them. We'll be happy to answer questions as we go through or afterward.
Thank you. So, as the town looks at the next project for the next PEF coming up this August, we want to focus on areas that are in within the 2015 plan. As Mark spoke of, areas that were within that plan will be higher on the priority list. Just to orient everybody, we have a map of the contingency sewer area. So, this is from the 2015 plan. Every area that's in a color was part of the potential sewer-ing that was in that plan. If you look at the area that's outlined in blue, that's the sewer shed that's currently under construction with the new facility. What's shown in black are areas that have been identified by the Sewer Commission as potential next steps for sewer-ing. So, if we look immediately south of the blue, that is the area that was scheduled for Phase Two, for the next phase to go to the facility that's currently under construction. As we move west, we look at an area that was scheduled under Phase Two. This was an area that was originally scheduled for municipal sewer-ing that would be conveyed to the Mashpee Plant. And as Mark noted, that plan to bring municipal flow to Mashpee Commons has not proceeded to date. Other areas that have been identified, looking to the northwest, is an area around Mashpee Wakeby Pond, and then to the northeast, two areas that were originally part of future phases in the Mashpee Wakeby and the Centuah Pond watersheds. And there's one additional area that has been identified northeast of Centuah Pond that was not in the original plan. It can be evaluated and incorporated as part of the update that we're currently working on, but for this upcoming application, our recommendation is to focus on areas that were identified in that 2015 plan. The one other note that I wanted to make on this slide is all the areas that we're going to be talking about are approximate. They're based on planning level concepts. As we move further in design, we'll need to confirm the pump station locations that were originally proposed, confirm if there are any proposed easements, and then gather data from field investigations, all of which affects the cost. So, the final sewer sheds will be determined as part of, as design progresses. Yes?
Could I ask you something? Could you, could you define a little more accurately the Mashpee River or Bay?
The watershed line?
Yes, the, the water area itself. It's hard to distinguish where that, where it starts and where it ends for the, for the, the pond, the Mashpee Pond, or river, I should say.
The Mashpee River, so it's slightly to the west of the, the watersheds that have been defined.
Is there something that I can focus on to be able to see that on this map?
There's a better map, actually, a couple pages down.
I don't...
This map is really tough to see.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm having a hard time.
One way, Tom, one way I was looking at it is if you see the gray line, that's the Mashpee River, and the big green is the Mashpee River Woodlands. So, that's a good way to kind of orient it, and it's all the markup.
The blue, the blue circular area, whereas the residence, obviously, you can see the house lots. Is that, is the river just to the left of it?
It's just to the south and to the west. It's that gray line that proceeds down along
Yes, and I don't know where it ends there, but, okay, so that, and it looks like it goes out to the near bay area, but it's hard to tell.
Yeah, just because I think the detail of the black outline, but I get where you're coming from.
Right, and, and, and my concern, and, and all of that, and, and I, and I'm just wondering, I might be jumping the gun, is, is that in any way, are we able to treat the water from the Mashpee River by the same system, just to reduce the nitrogen and phosphorus and all of the, the things that are really destroying the Bay, the Mashpee River right now?
So, the reason that these two areas, and I, I did find a pointer, so if you can see where I'm looking in red, these two areas are closest to the Mashpee River.
Yep.
The reason they were targeted as part of Phase Two, that's your most immediate impact of reducing nitrogen. So, nitrogen on Cape Cod, the rule of thumb is it flows one to two feet per day with groundwater, so that's, as you sewer, you're going to start seeing the most immediate impact to your bay.
So, so this, this, this area would be treated, is there a discharge pipe that's coming down from up above and out into the bay?
No, so...
No discharge?
It would be sewed, it would be conveyed to the plant, so this is where the plant is being constructed, and we would have effluent recharge at that site to a, to a certain capacity. Once we've exceeded that capacity, we would need to find a second recharge site.
So, so you're going to redirect, right now, we have the, I think it's the Mashpee Commons is up above, and their discharge is just shot out into the back of the, the area there, and it obviously flows into the Mashpee River. Do, are we directing that as well into the treatment system?
We, so...
That's clean water, Tom.
That's why?
That's clean.
What's clean?
We don't have to redirect the, the outflow from their process.
What happened to the Mashpee River?
The Mashpee River is polluted from other sources. They're the cleanest thing in
From other sources and not the Mashpee Commons or anybody that's discharged?
That's correct.
Cleanest thing we have in town.
Mashpee Commons has its own facility. They treat to the highest level of treatment for nitrogen, so it's equivalent to the, the plant that's currently being constructed.
Right.
It takes it down to the limit of technology.
And, and I know that the system does a very good job. It's just that the volume is kicked up substantially because Mashpee Commons controls consistently, so that we, I don't know at what level that you cut the volume off. There's, I, I'm, and that's, I don't know, and I'm just curious.
If, if you can, Tom, I think even by the maps, it'll get further, this whole clarity. I think if we can get through the presentation this way, I think everyone's going to dig in with some questions.
But just to clarify, none of these options look at taking Mashpee Commons flow. The original concept was to add municipal flow to Mashpee Commons, and that's the, the option that's fallen through.
Excuse me?
Yes.
One question on this map. The areas that have the small dots and then the crosshatch?
Yes.
Right, and that general area, what are the differentiations to that area? What are, what are those different hatch marks distinguishing? Like, how much of that area is actually going, contributing to and being filtered through the Mashpee Commons facility, and which ones aren't? Does that reflect that?
So, the, the dots, those are private, private sewer-ing, so that's the approximate extent of the Mashpee, Mashpee sewer shed. It's primarily within the Commons itself. With the lines, those were INA systems at the time of the plan, so they had enhanced onsite septic systems that treated for nitrogen.
Thank you.
So, we wanted to present a menu of nine different options. I'm going to describe them in words and then present maps of each of the different options, and then we'll, we'll end on these same slides so that everybody can discuss the costs. So, the first option, oh, one other thing that I wanted to point out. So, this is the sewer shed that's currently under construction. There is a small portion to the north, which was originally part of Phase One, that was taken out of the original construction project. So, for any of the sewer sheds to the north, that would need to be constructed in order to be able to convey flow through that area to the plant. So, the, the first option is to construct that balance of Phase One, that pink area to the north, and that would provide your artery to the northern sewer sheds. The second is to construct the area to the south, and again, we'll look at maps for both of these. The third is to go both to the north and to the south. So, for the first two options, there is existing capacity at the plant that's under construction. Those first two options would fit within the estimated remaining capacity of the plant. Once you go to Option Three, you need more treatment capacity at the plant, so that looks at expanding the plant. It's been designed to do that, but it's to do the installation of that expansion. And then Option Four is layering on Option One and Option Three. As we go to Option Five, we're looking at portions that were in later phases of the original plan. So, Option Five looks at everything that was discussed on the previous slide plus portions of Phase Five. Option Six looks at everything on the last slide plus portions of Phase Four. And then Option Seven looks at two portions of Phase Two, the portion that was originally slated to go to the plant that's currently under construction, and then potentially rebooting a portion on the western side of the Mashpee River to the plant on the eastern side. Number Eight is another combination of those options, and then Number Nine looks at Option Four, as well as portions of Phases Three and Four. And again, we'll get back to these numbers at the end of the presentation. So, this is an outline of the first option. Again, what's in blue is what's currently under construction. This option looks at completing Phase One. The primary advantage of doing this is to provide your artery to the north to continue sewer sheds to the northern part of town, including sewer sheds that are within the subwatersheds of Mashpee Wakeby and Centuah. Another advantage of this option is it doesn't trigger the expansion of the wastewater treatment facility. And then with that expansion, you will need to revise the, the groundwater discharge permit, which is anticipated to be a complex permitting process. We just wanted to note that in these options. One disadvantage is if you look at this as a standalone project, it's not picking up a lot of nitrogen load for the cost. It's vital as an artery to the north, but in itself, it's not removing a lot of nitrogen from the watershed on a per-cost basis. The second option looks at, instead of going north, extending the sewer shed to the south. So, this is looking at what was the original Phase Two to this facility. One of the primary advantages is you're removing load right at the head of the river, so this is one of the most immediate impacts from sewer-ing in restoring the health of the river. It was also the next proposed phase in the 2015 plan, and it's a relatively dense neighborhood. And the majority of that peninsula, it's anticipated, it can be brought to the plant without expanding the existing capacity. The primary disadvantage of this as a standalone project is it's just focusing on the coastal estuaries. It's not taking out any load that's also in a freshwater sub watershed. Option Three is an iteration of Option Two, but here, proactively, the facility is being expanded so that it's ready for the next phase of sewer construction. So, it's an additional step to get ready for additional sewer-ing.
I think what you just said is you'll install the equipment in the building...
Yes.
...to allow us to pick up another 1,000 houses, or you...
Another 120,000 gallons per day.
Yeah.
I think gallons per day, sorry. And then also the recharge capacity to be able to discharge it.
Open that, yeah.
Anastasia, the increased recharge capacity is a function of the soil up there?
Could you please take it to the microphone?
Yes. The, the increased recharge capacity is a function of how fast we can drain the water out of the, of the ponds, correct?
So, there's, there's several factors. One is how fast we can drain it through the sand. They're very good sandy soils, so we anticipate a very high rate, looking at that metric alone. But we also have to look at how the, the water interacts with groundwater and how it mounds and how it influences nearby surface waters. That's the more complex part of it.
Having seen the property as you have...
Yes.
Do you have any concerns at all of not passing that?
From a hydraulic standpoint?
Yes.
No, no.
No, okay.
But, but...
But.
But, there's a, there, there is a complex part of this. Once the groundwater makes its way, sorry, once the, once the treated wastewater makes its way to the groundwater, it, it increases the level of the groundwater, and there are complexities that result from that, impacts on ponds, and it's a, it's a complex part of the permitting process, and that's where we, that's where we're running into challenges, not getting it down, but, but keeping, keeping the level of the groundwater low enough so it doesn't impact ponds in the area and rivers in the area.
And that's a challenge that multiple Cape communities are struggling with right now. Option Four is a combination of the three options we've talked about. So, this is providing your artery to the north. It's providing your sewer-ing in the closest vicinity to Mashpee River to the south, and looking at the, the plan to upgrade, part of which will be needed for this sewer-ing, part of which will be available for a future sewer-ing project. And now, with Option Five, we're starting to look at what additional phases could also be incorporated into a potential project. So, Option Five has all the components we've just talked about, and it also looks at extending sewer to the northwest of Mashpee Wakeby Pond. So, with these scenarios, we're now starting to pick up load from the, the freshwater subwatersheds as well as the coastal water, watersheds. Option Six is looking at an even further expansion, now looking at sewer-ing to the west and to the east of Mashpee Wakeby. And this sewer-ing to the east of Mashpee Wakeby is also in the sub watershed of Centuah Pond, so it's a, a benefit to both ponds. Option Seven looks at the original Phase Two that was slated to go to the facility under construction, and then also looking at whether some of the Phase Two flow from the western side of the river could potentially be brought to the facility. One major complication of this option is, if you look at the sewer shed as it's defined, it includes a number of properties that have existing private wastewater facilities. If you're looking at it for the, the upcoming PEF, that's a very, very compressed timeframe to have the negotiations to be able to take over those systems, if that's something that the town was looking to do and to bring that flow to the, the facility that's under construction.
Can you say that again?
Yes. So, this option has several facilities that have their own existing wastewater treatment facility.
Roach, deer crossing, wind chimes.
Yeah. And so, the reason we were asked to look at this is there is existing infrastructure. It may be a way to get more properties to the municipal treatment plant to get a higher level of treatment. However, there needs to be a negotiation on who owns that infrastructure, does it get handed over to the town, or what does that arrangement look like?
The thought was we'd do the same thing that we just did on Sea Oaks and, what's the other one?
Summerwood.
Summerwood.
Would you say bracketing the Mashpee River like this would be the most effective way to pull nitrogen out of the groundwater feeding into that river?
It would pull a substantial amount of nitrogen at the head of the river. However, it is a, a long force main that's needed, so it may not be the, the most cost-effective next step.
Understood.
Thank you.
Option Eight looks at expanding on Option Seven and adding the artery to the north. And then the last option looks at the original Phase Two, completing the original Phase One, and then focusing on sewer sheds in the upper reaches that are on the eastern side of Mashpee Wakeby Pond. So, I wanted to bring back the, the two tables that had the order of magnitude cost estimates for each of these different options, and to see if there were any, any questions. And these are on two slides that we can flip back and forth on.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, if you don't mind, maybe, this might be a good time, if you don't mind, to start it off, the Sewer Commission with questions?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair.
And then, we'll go from there.
I guess my first question would be, we've got eight options and four price tags. Can you walk me through how these get combined and what the, what we're looking at per option per price?
Sure. So, option number one is completing Phase One. That's looking to the north. The project cost, which is comprehensive, it includes engineering, police allowances, construction costs, is approximated at $17 million. The second option is a separate option looking to the south. Would it be helpful if I showed the, the figures, or?
Yes, ma'am. That'd be great.
Yep.
So, in this option, instead of going to the north, you're going to the, the south and picking up the load that's closest to the Mashpee River.
So, Anastasia, why don't you show Option One, and that's the $17 million one, right? Right?
Yes.
So, if you can all look at your slides, so this is, this is the option for the first one, right? So, this is a $17 million one.
This was, was pulled off of the last Phase One.
No, this is what's being done. That's just a connection from the, from the processing area north to Town Hall. That's what it amounts to.
Yeah, but it was pulled off of Phase One.
Not a lot of collection at all.
Yes, we, we removed it from Phase One.
It was pulled off of Phase One.
Yes.
And then Option Two, which is looking to the south, so this is the original Phase Two, is $26 million. Two, is $26 million. And I'll just page through them. Please stop me if there's questions. Option three is looking at the same sewer shed as option two, but also expanding the plant, getting ready for the next phase of sewer construction. So that's doubling the existing capacity that you have at your plant, and that is $36 million.
So step three expands the facility to handle step four? Is that correct?
Yes.
Put equipment in there that will process the additional water.
I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page.
Question?
Yes.
When you're establishing the polygons that encompass neighborhoods, you know, I see here on this image, down on the bottom right, there's, you know, it looks like development or at least street layouts that aren't factored into that polygon. So, you know, what's kind of influencing that? Are they non-contributing point sources to the nitrogen problem? Or, you know, why exclude those when you're establishing?
A lot of those are just lots.
They're just lots.
Those odd shaped pieces, they're all crazy lots.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you.
They're not houses.
Please continue. Oh, Ms. Harris?
I just have a question. So the estimated numbers of properties that are being affected in the first one, it was 45. And then as we go to the second two that you just talked about, two and three, we've then increased the capacity up to 376. Is that correct?
Yes. And that's a function of the density of the...
It's the density and then the shortness of the pipes. We don't have to go as far with the, with the collection.
Yes, yeah. So denser, denser are typically more cost-effective.
I understand.
For exactly that reason. All right. So option three is setting you up to have capacity for the future. In option four, you're starting to tap into that capacity, into that second stage that you've built at the plant. So in this option, you're expanding the plant, and then you're searing to the south to pick up your most immediate load in the Mashpee River, and then to the north to provide your artery to the northern sewer sheds. And that option is $53 million. And the remainder of these options, these approximate sewer sheds were chosen to stay within that expansion to double the capacity of the facility. So at that site, the way it was originally designed, you can do that two more times and originally have four times the capacity. But here, we're just looking, if you double the capacity, what are different options for bringing flow within that capacity? Option five builds on option four and then adds the sewer shed to the northwest. That is $70 million. Option six continues to build, so all the same infrastructure in five, also looking to the east of Mashpee Wakeby, and that is $82 million.
So just to clarify again, back in the expansion of three, where does that, how, where does that take you? Does that take you through six? The expansion of three?
Sorry, can you ask the question again?
With the expansion of three, the treatment center?
Yeah.
Will that handle the, the capacity handle it up to step six?
It will handle all the remainder of the options.
So you're gonna put in the three additional lines in that, with that 10 million dollars?
Just, just one additional line.
So you're not filling the building, to answer his question?
No, no. So it's not the full, full capacity.
He's only doing the second line. There'll still be room for two more lines in that building that we can expand into when we pick up the north.
Yeah, I'm not worried about, I, I'm not talking about the full capacity of this treatment center yet. I'm just looking at, with option three, we can get to what, I know we can handle four. Can we, and we can handle five, and we can handle six with that upgrade in three.
Yeah. All of them just require, you know, once you, once you hit three and four, all of the rest just, just require one extra train at the treatment plant, one extra set of tanks, or one extra train.
Am I correct in my understanding that option one and option two could be handled by our existing or are about to exist sewage treatment plant?
Yes. Option two may need to be truncated slightly, but the majority of option two can be handled with your existing. And you may be able to do, we just need to go a little further in the valuation to see if we're comfortable with that.
The reason I ask is because for everybody's information, if anyone, I'm sure you all are well aware, we spent most of our money in this first phase building the treatment plant, and we're searing less than 500 homes. I would like to see, from my opinion and my fellow commissioners and members of the select board, feel free to agree or disagree. I'd love to hear what you have to think. My thought is that we should be spending our money on building out the actual transmission of the sewage to the plant, to as many houses as we, as we can in areas that are impacting the watershed and our water quality the most. So the most vital areas with the most effluence is the closest to our Mashpee River.
I also like just put something out there to the joint committees or boards and commissions. Does anybody not think that we should go to at least step four? Just for discussion purposes, I say, okay, because if we can see, if we can all agree that step four we're, we're good with, let's start, we can talk about, you want to talk about five, we can talk about six. But is everybody in agreement that step four makes sense?
I guess I'd like a point of clarity, just from my understanding, if, what's to prevent us from, I mean, this is a plan. It's not committing us to, you know, securing the funding immediately, right? It's a, it's a plan.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, why not go for the, the full gusto if it's your plan? And then if, if we were to go with the, you know, hit all of it, you know, these are the areas we want to get, would that change, after you kind of go through your order of magnitude, is that gonna, are you gonna modify your phased approach in, in your order of magnitude to inform the pursuit of funding?
So I guess, you know, the reason that we're here today, I gave a summary of the plan update that we're doing, but the reason that we're here today is to get some guidance on a project to submit for funding. So the, the plan update is going to cover the rest of the, the rest of what you need. But, but for today, we're seeking some guidance on the next project that you need to do. Does that make sense?
You have an August 11th date that you're dealing with.
But let me just...
Application for funds, so we have to choose what we'd like to say at this point makes sense. You guys on the board have to make a decision. And then you put it on the, you apply for the funds, whatever amount, et cetera.
Right.
So it's merely a process of keeping things moving.
I just want to clarify, just, just so everyone understands. Again, we're at a treatment center, we have a treatment center, we have Phase One. We're going north, we have a potential going north, we have a potential going south, we have a potential going west. Everybody understands that. At the same time, we have to do Phase One, so it's not a cut, pick and choose. If we don't do Phase One, we can't go north, because that's the tracks to connect other potential phases.
And Mr. Whedon made an excellent point earlier. He spoke to me off mic, that treating the full length of searing, the full length of Mashpee River is better than what I said, which was bracketing the headwaters of the river. So to back up what you're saying, I agree.
So it's the same thing as where Phase One is, if for us to go south, we have to do the phase, go south to connect the tracks before we can connect the tracks again even further to the next step. So again, my whole, back to my other questions, is there any other questions about one through four? So then we can still, I mean, just for the sake of time, I, I think everyone is in agreement with one through four and why? Mr. Lyons?
Well, I'd just like to confirm what the issue is with one, the northern pipeline, okay? We're not going to initially connect anything on the other end of it. So there was no sense in putting that in yet until we're ready to fund that whole area for collection, then put the Don pipe in, because you'll need it. We don't need it now. So we don't need to put that pipe, number one, in, in there. It's not going to serve anything. It's going to sit in the ground empty for two to three years.
Well, not, it depends upon which phase we stop at.
Well, just don't consider, it was just all of the options that can add up to a certain amount of money. We don't have to do any one of the options here that they're presenting. They're giving us the, the table. It's a buffet. Choose the ones that make the most sense collecting and being efficient.
Then you can't choose the other buffet items that go north unless you do one first?
They're not on this. We don't have anything north in here of any, any significance at all.
Mashpee Wakeby?
Yeah, but the Mashpee Wakeby problem really is something we've got to help settle with sandwich before we make a financial commitment on the north side.
All right. So, but again, that's after Phase Four. I, I hear what you're saying, Joe, I'm just saying, we just got to connect the tracks. The piping has to be connected from Phase One. So if everyone understands that there's blocks, we have to connect the blocks.
One thing, Mr. Chair, if I may to consider, is that we've heard tonight earlier briefly that the amount of money that our first phase cost was a chunk that we've proven we can handle, we can do, and we can proceed without an undue tax burden, but also get the sewer in and completed, at least started. We finally broke ground after 20 years. Guaranteeing funding with a similar sized chunk might be a great way to look at this, to take that size, that amount of money, assuming that's what we're going to get, while remembering it's going to cost more by the time we get there, and then targeting the most vital options that we decide jointly on this plan within that $56 million range.
I think that's a good idea, because we know we can do the 56. And then start our next, next phase with the same amount of money and get to that point and go from there.
I agree, Madam Clerk.
That way, it is not such a burden to the resident on the tax bill.
And the other side of this too is to remember that if we do bite off too much at once, that could freeze this project for a while. It might not, people may say, I just spent how much money? And that might stop us on our tracks, and we can't have that happen. Problem's too vital.
Mr. O'Hara? So let me just be clarified on this, and this will include you as well.
Your mic.
Can you tell me what your position is in this project? Are you advising us in coming up with ideas, suggestions that you think are wise for us to be making? The GHD as your, are you?
They were requested...
The developer or?
They were requested to provide the options and then to answer the questions related to the options, and I just assumed get through that.
Just, just the options. Do you have recommendations on the options? Because I'm, I'm a builder, all right? And if I have a plumbing issue that's an issue in a job, I go to the plumber. When there's an electrical issue, I go to the electrician. That's my, my job is to make sure it all goes together right. So I look at you as you have that knowledge. Why am I being asked to make a decision when you have the knowledge? Can you make recommendations to this board based on everything that you propose?
Can I try to answer that? Because it was the incident of private conversation. How much money do we want to spend?
Yeah, well, we could, and I'd love to hear what he says. We don't have to do it all, but...
You'll say, you'll say 200 million.
Whether it goes stage, stage one, what I just heard, we're not going to hook up. I didn't know we weren't hooking up. So now, so we're going to do stage two, or maybe four. If you throw those recommendations to me, this is valuable. And I, everything that I do, when I listen to the, when we look at budgets here, I listen to the, to the town's accountant. I listen to them. That's their job to advise me to make the right decision. So that's why I'm here. I don't want to make a decision in a, in a meeting for a couple of hours, because isn't this nice in Mashpee River? And that, no. I want to know what is the most effective dollar. How do we make this work? How do we save money? You two know this. If you have this knowledge, that's all I need to know. I don't need to know a whole lot other than that, but make the right decisions for the most, for the most effective cost. In and out, done deal. That's all I feel.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, Michaela, was that, sorry?
Thank you. I know members of the Sewer Commission and GHD have been looking at this together for a long time. You and I have been at most Sewer Commission meetings, so we've looked at some of this. And I think your suggestion that we start looking at phase, or not phase, option four, is a good place for us to begin. I think that just makes common sense to, to start there. The Sewer Commission agrees. Because until we look at four, we can't look at five through nine. And I think it's important that we consider all of the options. I think what GHD has done for us is to show us the advantages of each, and then it's a cost breakdown. And I think they can answer questions for us about the most efficient nitrogen per cost and lane pipe per cost. But I think we need to look at this.
I was back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I am concerned that we're floating around this figure of 50 to 60 million dollars, because we were able to handle that amount of money in Phase One. But I would like to know, from the board or financial people in the town, how much of that was one-time grant money that we were able to get that will not be available going forward in the next phase?
All of it.
So, all, okay.
All of it.
All of it.
Except, yeah, except for the 10, well, the $10 million override. That was, everything else was included in the whiff and other proceeds. So this is, and that's why it's a, it's a heavy, it, it's, it's a lot of thought into this, because this is a tax burden. This is taxes.
This is going to be a tax burden that we did not experience with Phase One.
Correct.
All right, just so that we know. So let, just say that we were able to handle a specific amount in Phase One, we should be able to handle it in Phase Two. It's probably not as gorgeous.
Correct. When it comes to receiving the zero interest funding, yes. When it comes to the tax burden, you're exactly correct.
Could I perhaps give a little bit of an answer here? We were asked by one of our selectmen to give us a, I think, a cost question. What would you recommend? There is a simple way to look at it, and it's not complex. The cheapest way to put additional units through the plant, so we begin to clean up the nitrogen pollution, is number seven. It would only cost us $107,000 per house. Eight is $118,000 per house. This is for the whole infrastructure of the plant, the whole business. Now...
Wait, Joe.
Other areas like number four is $126,000 per house. So the cheapest way to go is seven or eight, as far as getting job done. Job one is to hook up houses and clean the water so we stop polluting the environment. Those are the two cheapest ones. The question that you've got to deal with, and we've talked about it.
Cheap is, cheap is come out. No one ever said the cheapest one.
Is how much of a bite do we want to take?
No, you just, I just want to clarify. What did you say? You said how much it's going to cost the household in tax, increase in taxes? What number did you say?
I didn't say that. I didn't. I said the cost to put a house, how many houses do we get for the investment in each of these options? The option number seven, it's only going to cost us $107,000 per house. Option eight is only, is $118 per house. Down in, with just number four, is $126,000 per house. It's cheaper to go bigger in the ultimate point, but that means a bigger tax hit. No question. I'm not arguing the point.
Okay.
So the efficiency is not down around four. The efficiency is at seven and eight. Or even larger, which they didn't, they weren't asked for, so they didn't give.
We never said number four was an efficiency. We just talked about collaboratively, we agree that up to step four, because you got to do up to step four to get to seven, because you have to connect the pipes. So we...
Seven and eight do not have any northern pipeline in it, which no one's going to be connected with for years. It's dropped out, so it's not necessary. Well, it's not necessary until we have the funds to clean up the whole northern area. We don't have those funds yet. That's section three.
I just want to clarify one thing for selectman O'Hara.
I, I just want to clarify one thing for Selectman O'Hara.
Thank you.
All of the colored areas that you see and all of the area, all of the options, they're all things that will have to be done. It's just, we're just talking about the order. So I just want to make sure you understand that it's not, you're, you're not trying to figure out, what do I do, what do I do now? Do I do this one or that one and I won't have to do the other one? No, it's, it's, it's merely just an order. All, every, all those different colors, they're going to have to be done sooner or later.
Yes, I clearly understand that. It's just one step at a time.
Right, right.
That's all, yeah.
So that's, that's why I, the, the, the cost of these options are all fairly different. And, and that's, that's why we presented that because it's a, it's a kind of a decision on how much you feel you can spend or want to spend.
And from my position, I would take your recommendation because you've done this more frequently than I have. And so I think your, your experience and your knowledge is, is valuable. And that's why I think you're here.
And tonight, tonight is a submittal for August 11. So we need to know where, what money we're going to spend and what phase we're going to be at for August 11.
Mr. Whedon, did you have something else as well?
I mean, for me, looking at the maps and understanding where our, our, some of our larger problem areas are, you know, as I told Chad, like, you know, addressing this from the head of the, head of the issue, the point source, just, I, I can't get, stop thinking about, you know, trying to address it from the point source rather than working from the mouth up. You know, or from the tail up rather. You know, so, I mean, for me, in, in order to achieve what we're looking to achieve, the, the ones that seem to make the most sense is Five, Six, and Nine. You know, because they're all along the river corridor, you're targeting key areas that are densely populated along the river corridor, you know. I'd prefer Six only because it addresses, you know, a portion of the contributors to both Mashpee Pond and Santuit Pond. And I didn't know, you know, if you had any kind of numbers that factored in the density of those areas to help influence the, the decision on those, you know, those options.
It's the number of properties, the right-hand column.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may?
Yes, absolutely.
Got you. What I did was I did a matrix and I did all of the different options across the top. And then I went down and looked at the cost and it came down with what Tom was asking for, which is the cost per property connected. And Number Nine is $68,000. Number Eight is $117,000. Number Seven is $106,000. So actually, Number Nine would give you the biggest bang for the buck. If you're looking for, trying to get the most nitrogen out for the least amount of money spent, that will be Number Nine.
Can I also help to clarify? It, it also gives us the largest number of properties on Option Number Nine. And the estimated number of properties is 1,288. So we're talking about largest amount of nitrogen and largest amount, greatest density as well, right?
Yes.
So, so if we're reading this correctly, what they're talking about is, again, Option Nine, that is Steps One through Four plus Nine? Is that correct?
So it's One through Four and then adding these two sewer sheds to the east. So if you look at the figure immediately west of Mashpee Wakeby and to the northwest of Santuit. But it is, it does have all of Option Four and then extends the sewer sheds to the northeast.
Which should theoretically significantly help Santuit Pond, where the water flows southwest.
What's the comment about Santuit?
The, the, this option where encompasses the yellow and green between Mashpee Lake and, and Santuit.
Just don't bet your buck on, on collecting sewers will straighten out Santuit. That's a, that's a poor gamble. We cannot confirm that technically.
It's so shallow.
It will be better, yes. But that doesn't address the problem which was identified after a $25,000 survey. It said it's the phosphorus in the mud that's killing us up there. And you can't get rid of the phosphorus. So you can bury it in alum or you hope that the state will eventually approve phosilox.
So that's just time.
Or you can dredge the whole damn pond and have another problem somewhere else. You've got to get rid of the phosphorus. We can't do that with sewers. Sewers won't help Santuit.
So what's the answer to that?
Time.
Alum, time, stop running high-powered boats up there that stir up the phosphorus? You know, you've got to just keep addressing it. They're, they're doing things to stop the runoff into the pond, to, to use catch patients to catch the garbage that gets washed in when we have rainstorms because it is downhill. They're trying to improve that. And once that improvement and stop mixing it up, we'll probably have a lot less cyanobacteria in there. Okay, get your boat. Let's go racing.
Thank you.
Michaela, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, we've talked about Nine with regard to the lowest cost per property. What's the most nitrogen efficient per cost of these? Four?
All we can say is how many units we, we're cleaning up. We can't. Our efficiency is 90% removing nitrogen.
So on an unintenuated basis?
Yes.
It would be this option here?
Okay, Number Nine.
Number Nine.
I'll repeat that, Katie. I can't hear what you're saying.
Number Nine again.
Move that microphone a little closer. That's all.
So I, I believe it would be Number Nine on an unintenuated.
So Nine's coming up quite a bit.
So.
Well, it's 1,288 units.
Units.
They never units talk.
Can I, could I also ask about the complexity of the permit? I understand you've talked about the permit and that's listed under disadvantages for some, but it doesn't seem insurmountable. It's, what is the complexity and can we move forward with that?
We, I would say it's not insurmountable. These permits are currently hung up in the state for other towns. So we would need assistance from the town to help push this through in order to meet the schedule. So that's, that's an important point. It's not insurmountable, but it's going to require some assistance.
I, I just have one other point to make in terms of the, the phosphorus and the issues about the ponds. Because we may not be able to do anything about what's already in the silt, and we may not be able to do anything about what's already collected, but searing the numbers of properties around the ponds and around the estuaries will stop it from happening more in the future. And that's the one thing they'll have to keep in mind. Regardless of where we're going, whether it's toward the ponds or towards the estuaries, whatever we do is going to stop things from getting worse. It may not solve all the problems that we already have, but it will stop things from getting worse because it then addresses its large number of properties on the Number Nine option.
Chairman?
Yes.
I have a concern about Option Nine because we've already established that the state is comfortable issuing these, these loans with the 50 to 60 range. But now we're talking about 88 million. So how many of the projects that were refused on the last round of funding were in that 88 million range or, or above?
So the priority list does not, does not necessarily consider the dollar value. So I don't know that anybody was refused based on the cost. I was, it was more that the state, when they, when they present the SRF programs to towns, they, they encourage towns to stay in that area, but there were a small percentage of, of projects that were above that range. It's just most of them are in the 50 to 60 million or lower. The vast majority are.
And the ramifications of not getting approval for these funds means a, at least a one-year delay so we can apply for them again. Is that correct?
You, you're talking about local, local funding appropriation?
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, if you don't get a local appropriation, then you would fall off the list. So if you were, if you made, if you make the priority list and you don't secure the local funding, you would drop off the list and would have to reapply.
So if we don't get this through a yes vote with the community, then we've essentially tied our hands for another year.
Mr. Town Manager.
Simple question. Didn't Yarmouth get 207 million?
They did. What, what happens is the state seems to cap the individual years of funding. So if a project takes, say, two years or three years, they, they've, they have seemingly capped it at 50 million. I'm not sure if that's a hard cap, but they did, they did seemingly cap it in the list, so.
Is that 50 per year? So you could apply for 150 and get a three-year permit?
So, so as the Town Manager said, yes, there, I think Yarmouth had 200 million. I don't know how many years that is, but it's, they did cap it at a, at a per year, 50 million.
We can't spend it that fast anyway. If we just got it committed, then we could use it over two years if we asked for 100.
Yeah. Anybody else have any other input?
Get handy. Chicken.
Are we, are we?
I'm still, I'm still thinking about these various million-dollar figures and wondering how that would impact the tax base for the residents here.
Yeah, John, you indicated you could give us a cost per-
Yeah, so.
Per million borrowed.
If, so we've been talking like Step One through Four, right? Step One through Four would cost, according to these figures, which are average value of residential property, which I believe they registered as 665, 665,000. And that must, that's not the average in the Cape, but it's $100,000 higher than the Cape. It shows as a $152 increase in taxes.
Per year?
Per year.
If we borrowed what amount? 53 million?
That's Level Four, 53 million.
Okay.
Keep going.
Now, double that would be $300. It's a straight line. It should be a straight-line number. Is that correct?
What do you mean straight?
If you borrowed 106, it would be double that.
Um, let me see here. What level is, what level is?
Any one, seven, eight, or nine. All three of those would be appropriate.
So Seven would be, according to the spreadsheet in front of me, would be $320.
So for $320, a dollar a day, I can help clean up the environment in this town? I am more than pleased to do that.
Now, we have some-
It's not as scary as it sounds. I mean, when you put the numbers up like that, I think the residents would be willing to pay it, you know, 300 bucks.
Yes, I've been fighting all week for the fact that I do not believe we should be a minimum. We should ask for at least 100 to 110 million, which would allow us to do Seven, Eight, or Nine, whichever is the best mix from an engineering point of view, a timing point of view, a water processing time of view. But put all the mechanics behind that and put 110 million on the table, and we're going to start cleaning up the river in three years. If we don't do this, it's five to 10 years. We got to get the lead out. Let's do it.
I agree.
Marath, you have something?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm good, I'm good.
Anybody?
Oh, I mean, selling 300 something dollars a year to really fix the problem right, I don't think is a very difficult sell.
I just want to acknowledge that for some people, that $300 a year is going to hurt.
It's-
It's going to hurt.
I agree. I, and again, I, you know, I don't think anybody, I don't think anybody here, I think we go, to go back to Step Four, 53 million, I don't think anybody here is going to say no to 53 million. So now the question is, do we, you know, what are you thinking about recommendation? Because, you know, there is, I'm, from my understanding, so Nine is kind of an outlier because it's, it's One through Four plus Nine, correct? And then-
Go to it.
Yes, One through Four plus Two distinct sections.
It abandons 500 units in the house, in the South that was included in Eight. You know, I don't know how the numbers come out the same when you abandon so many.
What, which 500 units are abandoned in the South on, on Nine?
Deer Crossing.
Oh, okay.
Deer Crossing.
The West Side, yeah.
You know, shops, Roach, the Roach area, and one other one, Green, not Greenfield, but-
Greenwood.
Greenwood, I think.
And Nine prevents a potential delay or complication or push-through to the town?
Why?
Why?
No, I think that's-
Oh, he's asking the engineers for-
Correct. That's, I thought that you said that would need a little of assistance with the town. Is that correct?
Any, any upgrade to the, to the facility is going to require assistance from the town to help with, with an expanded discharge permit.
Oh, okay. All right.
I think there was also the added issue of negotiating or possibly taking over private facilities, correct?
Can you go to that? Can you show that option?
That for Number Nine.
Nine's been dropped.
In Eight, in Eight means-
That is Seven.
All right. So we're having a meeting, please. So can you, can you clarify again?
Uh, sorry. So Option Nine does not include those existing private systems. Both Option Eight and Option Seven do.
But those systems are currently on treatment and/or IA systems, correct?
Yes. They currently have their own treatment facilities.
So I'm going to go out on a limb and say it's probably, if we're considering between Eight and Nine, it's more important to pick up those homes in the north that are on, have no treatment.
So go with Option Seven. Is that what you're saying, Chad?
I was just saying between, one moment.
Seven.
Oh, boy.
Seven doesn't pick up too much.
No, I, I believe I was looking at between Option Eight and Nine because Eight does both sides of the river, but the West Bank would require going through negotiations and possibly taking over private facilities.
That's why I didn't care for Eight. And then, you know, Eight falls just shy of the lake. It doesn't get the orange and yellow up top where Six does. Let's go back to Six.
Seven and Eight is very specific to both sides of Mashpee River.
And plus this.
And if that's our biggest concern.
Yes.
That's-
That's the most effective use of money for cleaning up the river. To include those. I know there's negotiations involved in Eight. Doesn't matter.
What you use?
It's a statement of reality.
Mr. Lyons, which option are you referring to? Six? Which option?
I don't understand your question.
You just said the best bang for our buck or something to that effect would be which option in your opinion?
Covering both sides of the river as far as the cleaning up of the river is concerned.
That's Seven and Eight.
You can't still leave 500 houses that are within a quarter of a mile of the river or 500 units dumping nitrogen into the river. And that's the ones you just eliminated by going to Nine.
Yeah, basically what you have to decide is do you want to put all your marbles on the Mashpee River? And that would do the left and the right. Or do you want to spread and put some down south and some up north? The difference between the two is 40 million dollars. To me, that's sizable sum. And the other thing that concerns, concerns me is taking over sewage treatment plants. I mean, we don't have a town engineer, number one. I know the grief that we went through just getting the two condominiums squared away. I, I think we're out of time. I mean, if, if time wasn't a problem and we had a town engineer and we've already talked into these other places, then I think, you know, you'd have a shot at getting through. But August 11th is coming and I would hate to-
Can I have quiet in the audience, please?
I would hate to say we're going to do Eight and then not be able to come through it. I would hate to say we're going to do eight and then not be able to come through it. And I think maybe we're just pushing the, a little too fast in that area. I'm all for cleaning up the Mashpee River, don't get me wrong, but that bothers me. And if we're looking for bang for the buck, I mean, you're saving $40 million and you're adding another 200 houses over option eight. I mean, to me, you have to decide, do you want the max, do you want the max nitrogen or do you want the max effect on the Mashpee River? I can't answer that question.
How many of those existing facilities have surplus capacity? Do they have surplus capacity?
No, they get anything other than the Commons plant has a lot of excess.
I believe that's true.
We had reports from Al Knoll, but they're about a year old now, and they dropped me out of the distribution, so I don't get them anymore. But they vary, everybody's up against the wall, and they're not meeting their nitrogen requirements. And there's a lot of issues with all these private stations. Now, the problem is twofold. You've got to think of the positive as well as the negative. The negative is you've got to deal with somebody? Not really, because they're all faced with having to replace it. And this is the point I wanted to make earlier, if I had a statement before we started. One thing this town can do, which will really help, and it's a selectman's issue, if you can require all private septic processing facilities in town to achieve state-of-the-art 90% nitrogen removal or work with the town, if you can make that a rule, then their contribution can be real to our program. But if you let them continue not doing a good job, breaking down all the time, and contributing nitrogen, it's unethical that those people get away with putting nitrogen in the ground where we're going to hang our whole plant and our costs on our residents. You know, they've got to be responsible. So we've got to ask these private parties to either come up to 90% processing, like our equipment or like the Commons equipment, or give it to the town or work with the town. Now, some of these facilities, we could, I know it's a negotiation deal, we could take over and run and put a filter in, for example, or improve their process and use those facilities. That was part of the original planning that was considered. So all of that is downstream. Today, the story is, we've got an opportunity to borrow money to keep the sled moving. We've got to get the Huskies in gear and decide whether we're going to play with 12 up front or six up front. My argument is six up front's no good. Go 12. Even if we took the money out over a two-year period, 50 this year and 50 next year, we can afford it. It's comfortable. If we have one person and 20 in this town that has a problem with their income and they're trying to live on social security in Mashpee, that's a mistake right there. But if they're trying to do that, we can give them a tax break for age and their value of their property and other things.
All right.
You've got to get the 10,000 people in this town the opportunity to clean it up.
I hear you, but you're talking about treatment centers, the whole thing. We're trying to focus on, we've got to get back on track here. We've got one through nine. Does anybody have any more input as far as a recommendation that they're thinking? You know?
I still like Chad and Michaela's recommendation of up to four. We're comfortable with four, with the 53 million going forward, and then bring in the, I mean... I don't know, that's my thoughts.
Mr. Chair, my, excuse me, my recommendation was we start at four.
Four, start at four.
Not that we, that we agree on four. I was saying, as the chair was, that we begin at four. So we eliminate one, two, and three and look from four down to nine.
Okay.
That was my recommendation.
Down to nine or up to nine?
Down on the list, up in price.
At this particular time, what we're doing is we're developing the base infrastructure so that we can add on to it later.
Correct.
Okay? And option four gives us another train, which is a very positive thing. And it also gives us the ability to go north and south. And actually, I think that's your starter. Now, what Joe said, you've got to remember what Joe said. He said, "The more you add on, the cheaper it is per." Okay, so right now, we're doing the real expensive part. But once we start, then, and that's why if you jump to something like nine, you're reducing the cost a lot because you're diluting all that work by the transfer station, the cost of that. If we, as a town, are going to ever get this thing done, we can't, we can't do it by adding 13 or 17 houses one year and then another 100 another year. We've got to, we've got to make a statement, and we've got to get moving, or...
What's your recommendation?
Excuse me?
What's your recommendation?
Given the recommendations that we have there, I would go with nine. I would go with nine. The reason is the cost per is...
The best.
Is the best by a long shot, and it's going to make a difference. I mean, I just, in the Sunday paper, if you read the Sunday paper, page two was Sinobacteria Update, People and Pets Should Avoid These Cape Ponds. And guess what? You know, we're right there. The two pond is right there. Now, according to the paper, it says this. "The blooms usually occur in late summer fueled by warm water or high levels of nutrients from fertilizers, runoff, wastewater seeping through the soil." So it sounds like it would have to affect in a positive manner the two ponds. Granted, they've got other problems, but at least it would, it would stop it from getting any worse.
If we don't clean up the river to begin with, we're going to lose it forever. Let's clean the river first and then move up north. That's my theory.
All right, so it's, it's fair argument. Just to clarify, so your...
Recommending what?
Your concept is nine?
Nine.
Which means one through four plus nine, which would be at $253, just so everyone's aware. That would cost $253 for the average or median household in Mashpee.
No, sorry, let me clarify that. That would be 80 million. So the, all the costs are cumulative for each option. That's the cost in that row. Yes.
Yeah, so, because I have a breakdown of each step for the tax increase, so...
Oh, sorry, sorry.
So, yeah, so this is from the town. So option nine would be a $253 tax increase to the town for the, to the, they call, I think it's the median resident.
On an average house.
On average house.
And it also captures the most properties of any of the options.
Option nine does include one, two, three, and four, correct? Okay.
So just, so that's your concept, and now you know the tax implications of that? I'm sorry.
Okay, I do have one thing.
I'm sorry, Phyllis.
The clock is ticking on a lot of the septic systems that we have now. The Title V, some of the cesspools. And I believe that after a certain date, if your system fails, you have a small grace period, and then you have to put in an IA system. And I'm going, there's a lot of people who do not want that to happen when they know that the sewer might show up fairly soon if we get on the ball and get it done.
Right.
And the problem with putting in an IA system, if you put it in other towns, you don't have to connect up to the sewer.
They give a grace period of eight to 10 years.
So that's something else to consider.
Right. So can I ask your recommendation? What do you think of this idea? It sounds very good to me, but as you're, as an advisor to the town, how do you feel about this presentation and this going with option nine? Finish in one, one, two, three, and four, and option nine. Sounds pretty good to me.
Yes, I guess what I would say is that I can't speak to you from a financial basis, right?
Financial, yes.
I, you know, all of these options are necessary. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be evasive, but from a technical standpoint, you can't make the wrong choice.
Gotcha. Okay.
Okay.
Great. I get your position. Thank you.
I'm going to, I'm going to be, I'm going to be really careful about this, but I am going to ask for if someone from the public would like to speak. And I'm, if it turns into a crazy show, I apologize. I'll take public comment later, but at this point, I will open up the public comment. And Mr. Gottlieb, if you don't mind?
First, I want to commend you all for taking this up. You've gone a great distance in a very short amount of time. Couple of things to think about. One is, you know, this whole issue around the lakes, everybody's kind of right. There's residual nitrogen and phosphorus in the sediment. They're going to contribute to degradation, poor water quality in the lakes. You're never going to make them better until you stop insulting them by adding more. So you can't necessarily solve the problem by sewer-ing it, but you can't solve the problem without sewer-ing it. Secondly, the areas around the ponds, especially the southern portion of Mashpee-Wakeby and the western portion, the eastern portion in yellow up there, that groundwater either goes to Santuitt or goes to the Mashpee River or goes to the Santuitt River. It may be far from the bay, but once it gets in that river, it's in the bay in a day. So it's tempting to be drawn down to the bottom and say, well, if we go down to the lower portions of the river and we sewer there, which you've got to do anyway, that we're going to have the greatest bang for the buck in terms of impact on the river system. But you don't lose sight of the fact that all that groundwater goes to a surface water first. And the water that hits from near the ponds, hits either of those rivers first, is going to get into that bay and have the quality problems that you've been experiencing. So David's right, and you start in your head and you work your way down. So there's no bad investment here. It's a picture of how you prioritize what you're doing. In my opinion, and it's only my opinion, the people of this town are concerned about the rapid decline in water quality. Used to be, upper river was bad, you went out into the bay. Now the bay's bad. Well, that was bad, so you went to the ponds. Now you can't go to the ponds. So where are you supposed to go? And I think people have, I think a lot of people care, and I think a lot of people will support you if you give them the chance to make a yes or no vote on this. And I know there's a lot of concern about not asking people to take too big a bite of the apple. You don't know how big a bite of the apple people are willing to take until you ask them. You can always move this forward, option nine. You'll have multiple opportunities over the next several months before you actually go to town meeting in May to trim your sails a little bit if you determine that you need to. It's easy to go down, it's hard to go up. In terms of applying for funding, a couple of things to remember. Yeah, the average typical municipal project is 50-something million bucks. There are plenty of bigger ones that get funded on the SRF. The top-rated project in the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts for statewide funding this year was the town of Yarmouth at $207 million. The actual physical cap on spending is actually a third of the amount they loan every year, which is a little bit more than a billion dollars. So no one project can get more than $300 million. The state cap on funding is not relevant to anything you're talking about right now. And if you get funded for a project that is bigger, as this one will be, in any iteration you're talking about, bigger than you can construct in one year, you're getting selected in the first year for that project guarantees you the multi-year funding on the rate of spend that you determine as a municipality in subsequent years. So you give yourself certainty. You don't have to reapply. If you need, if you get a $50 million project and you can spend it 20, 20, and 10, the first year you get the 20, the second year, they list you automatically for the next 20 because that's what you told them, or Mark would tell them, or Anastasia would tell them, is what your cost demand is going to be that year. So you lock yourselves in and get that funding, and you don't have to recompete. So there is a real advantage to go big in the initial stage because you are given the time through the state funding program to spend that at the rate at which you determine locally you can digest. Okay? As it relates to the tax implications, don't get locked in on those numbers. This, you know, the option four at 50-odd million dollars and the 153, that sounds an awful lot like the initial projections that we started off with when we looked at phase one at $54 million. And the assumptions that go into that, I don't know what sheet you're working off of, but I can guess what the assumptions are. And the assumptions don't account for zero interest loans from the state. They don't account for principal forgiveness from the Cape and Islands Water Protection Trust. There's a whole bunch of conservative assumptions that are built into that, without my seeing it, that make those numbers too high. Last time, we whittled it down to $54 for a $54 million project, and we started out, I believe, at 152. Okay? So there's a lot of opportunity out there to get money, and to speak to Phyllis's question, the last funding for phase one was $54 million plus the additional you went back for that was funded from a combination of zero interest loans, principal forgiveness from the Cape and Islands Water Protection Trust, additional principal forgiveness from the State Clean Water Trust, your proceeds from your WIF and proceeds from your short-term rental tax. You left money, the town left money in those accounts on the table to be available to fund the next phases. It's not gone. The money you spent is spent, but your access to money that would decrease the incremental tax impact on a per-property basis is still available. And until you define for your financial staff what you want to build, you can't responsibly know what the actual cost implications are going to be on the individual taxpayer. You've got to start somewhere. There's money available. And I'll close with the notion that this is year two of a five-year unprecedented infusion of federal money into the state revolving fund. Massachusetts gets $1.1 billion in bipartisan infrastructure funds that are going to the SRF. If you sit this out and break this project up because they're smaller bites and you don't want to hit the tax base more than you have to, you're actually increasing the overall cost because the amount of subsidized money is going to go down four years from now. The best opportunity you have right now to maximize somebody other than the taxpayers of Mashpee footing the full bill for this is to advance a large project now, and I encourage you to do so.
So just one clarity. So you're basically saying, in your personal opinion, what Al mentioned as far as potential nine?
Al's absolutely right. You know, all of your investments in phase one and all of your investments in one through three, as defined in here, are all building your capacity. So they're the most expensive things to do. You don't start whittling your cost per pound of nitrogen down until you start hooking up big numbers of homes. And more importantly than anything else, John, you don't start to see return on the investment in terms of improved water quality until you start doing thousands of homes, not 50 at a whack. If you want to meet the objective of having better water for the people in Mashpee, you've got to do it. And then by doing it, you provide people the comfort that they need that those upgrade requirements that they would have to finance individually from the Title V go away. You help your taxpayers in multitude of ways by thinking big here. And if it's too big, they'll tell you that in May, but I don't think they will.
Thank you for the help.
I agree.
And expertise.
Thank you.
All right. You know, again, we could probably take, you know, public, I think, obviously, Andy's expertise and history, and I think that's, well, appreciated.
Looking over the nine plans, I noticed that option nine is the only one where we have additional hookups that affect both ponds. It's the only one that has Santuitt and I think Mashpee-Wakeby.
No, six.
Six does?
Six and nine seem the best for...
Oh, yeah, you're right.
You know, addressing Mashpee and Santuitt. I mean, nine actually doesn't have the orange on the north.
No, go backwards.
Okay.
So it's one, one, two, three, four, and nine?
And it's nine. So as far as, you know, we could circle around and keep on talking, but it's been options. Does the Sewer Commission, I want to, you know, I'll hand this over to the chair, the Sewer Commission, if you... to the Chair, the Sewer Commission, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we've discussed at length the options here. Mr. Gottlieb's information was enlightening. I think we know what we're dealing with. We're dealing with an urgent environmental need and also a burden we're going to have to ask our taxpayers to foot. I'm thoroughly convinced that Option Nine is the correct course of action. And I would like to ask permission of the Chair to have brief discussion from my commissioners and then take a roll call vote.
That'd be great. Absolutely.
Questions, comments from the commissioners?
I move we recommend nine.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Chair, the vote's unanimous.
Thank you, Sewer Commission. Thank you, Mr. Gottlieb. All right. So does the board have any questions?
I make motion that we go with Option Nine also.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. I'll start the vote up, Michaela.
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Wow. Thank you, everybody. And like I said, I mean, this is seriously, you know, I came into today's meeting knowing, we knew we were going to walk out with it just a matter with what pieces. So, and again, it was unanimous, and I hope, and I ask everybody here that is concerned about this, I beg of you, talk to people. Because this, I'm looking for another unanimous vote at town meeting. Because that would be amazing. And it'll be the first time, I think statewide, maybe statewide, that that's ever happened two times in a row. So, all right. Thank you very much. I think, so where do we?
Mr. Chair, I would suggest that the Sewer Commission adjourn, and then you continue.
That's motion to adjourn. The Sewer Commission joint meeting with the Select Board.
Second.
Those in favor?
We're adjourned.
Aye.
And we're going to take a quick two-minute break.
That wasn't bad.
Yeah.
We sort of started off with just 15, so I immediately filed a bill for the other 180 or so million dollars to get back to that point, and that's pending right now. We know we need a lot of resources, we need funding, but the important step is what you've just done in terms of making a plan. So I appreciate that, and I think we'll probably go back and forth. I'm gonna throw the ball to my colleague here.
Thank you, Senator, and thank you for having us in tonight. So I left a meeting in Boston to get here in time. And I would have left a little earlier if I didn't know that the joint meeting started at 6:00. I just knew our meeting was supposed to be 6:30. So I did miss a little bit of the beginning of that. But what I thought was quite interesting was looking at the size of the project, right? And there was a little talk about the cap, whether or not there was a cap. So this year, with the 2023 intended use plans, the maximum annual allotment is 50 million. So there are actually four communities that got approved for projects larger. Obviously, you heard that the top one was Yarmouth. That's the largest in the state at 207 million. Intended use plan allocation, 50 million for this year. North Reading project is 107 million, 50 million for this year. Sudbury, 58.7 million, 50 for this year. And Greater Lawrence Sanitary District, 71.35 million and 50 for this year. So as you look to go out and acquire something that is in excess of that 50, Andrew hit the nail on the head. You gotta get in the line, you get ready, you get approved, and then you show them your burn rate. And it's 50 this year, and if you can do 50 next year, you get the 50. It's not a new project. You're already on there. The intended use plan is how they're gonna allocate the funding that's available. If it's 30 or 40 million next year, then you get that part, right? So the key is to get that application in by noon on August 11th. Because if you miss the noon deadline on August 11th, the rest of it doesn't matter until next August, right? So tonight, you made that decision. Now it's a matter of doing the mechanics and getting the formal application in so that you're available.
Can I speak on that application? The only other piece I would add to that, the great point that David just made, is to be sure it's complete as possible. And we'll be happy to be a resource in terms of connecting, but if it's, you know, if you're working for us 11th, you know, like I do in my law firm, pretend that's August 1st and make sure everything is done as you possibly can. And we'll work with the town manager, who obviously has already made a lot of plans in this regard, so that he's ready to go and to move forward, whatever the board decided. So really consider us a resource. And just like any project, the more that you look like you've really got this correct and you're ready to move forward, that's another reason to move your acceptance forward above the many towns and the many deadlines that the state and DEP are all looking at.
I'd also like to piggyback on the conversation about the privately owned facilities that you have now. A number of years ago, the town put in the application, we assisted the application for the Market Street Extension through a MassWorks grant. We haven't had any other sewer-related MassWorks grant in Mashpee, but I think as you explore this conversation about the future of upgrading those facilities so that they can take out more nitrogen and potentially tapping capacity that either isn't there now or capacity that could be created during the upgrade, that this would be ripe for MassWorks grant, whether you're working in cooperation with a private entity or you make that political decision to ask to take it over. And the community One Stop for Growth, I'm not sure, is Mashpee administratively tied into the community One Stop for Growth?
Yes.
If not, okay, I'll make sure you have the data. So that portal will allow a comprehensive application for grants like MassWorks and a plethora of other economic development grants, some of which you could tap into. And these are grants, so these aren't loans, right? So this is above and beyond the zero-interest loans that you have to deal with and then pay back. So the last one, the Market Street Extension, we got was 901.2, $901,250 for that project. And that was two administrations ago. So it's ripe for us to look at a way that we can work together and have Mashpee look at a MassWorks grant and then have us as your legislators help you push it over the finish line with the current administration. What I didn't, I'm not familiar, I'll be honest, so help me out. The current project requires betterments as well as general obligations, or no?
No.
No, okay. Now, I know we've had some conversations about the Betterment program that Falmouth used in 2014. We went to the state legislature and asked for a special act. So if at some point, as you move forward, you end up dealing with betterments, we were able to take the statutory construct of 20 years with balloon payments in the front, and you have to pass 1% above the rate you get. So if you get 0%, you had to pass 1% forward, okay? We were able to do a special act in 2014 that said even payments, 30 years, and you can pass on 0% if you so choose.
Which means the town picks up the rest under the general obligations.
Well, no, this would be for the loan. So there'd be no interest costs to the loan, and then you would not have to pass on 1% interest to the homeowner when you got 0%. Representative Madden, who was serving with me in the legislature at the time, then introduced in the next session, a general act, which you can accept by an act of town meeting. And that is Chapter 1 of the Acts of 2016. It will give you the same options, menu options that we had in Falmouth under a special act, by just a vote of your town meeting to accept Chapter 1 of the Acts of 2016. So another tool to put in your toolbox going forward.
Good timing.
Cobbling the financing together is going to be a challenge, but we're happy to plug you in on what the options are. David has laid out a couple of them right here. I think that it is good to have the conversation with betterments, because a lot of what the administration is moving forward with are contributions, sort of collaborations between the towns and the state. And I also wanted to follow up on a point that the rep made a little bit earlier, and that's with respect to the public-private partnerships and really the private landowners maybe getting information about that if they would partner with the town and use some of the municipal benefits, then it might be less expensive. So that's a tool in which the, in terms of the negotiation that the rep brought up earlier.
Anybody have?
Good advice. I like it. Good news is good.
A couple of quick, non-sewer-related updates. One, the hearing was on June 12th for your land transfer bill, H-2118. The written comment was submitted by Drew McManus, and we've told the chair that we want to get this thing moving. We're getting ready for this August recess, so we're not sure that it's actually gonna be reported out, because it's Article 97, so it requires a two-thirds roll call and a formal session. And the House and the Senate haven't had many formal sessions right now. So I'm hoping to tee this up so that as soon as we get back in the fall that we'll be able to do it, but I don't see it happening before August 1st. And the last one was the update on Will's Work Road. So we had had that agreement, and I don't know if you had a chance to read the documents I sent to see, do we have the signed copy?
We are checking into that.
Okay. So I've got the copy that was sent to the town to be signed in 2019, and I'm assuming it was signed, because in 2019, they went out and did the annual maintenance that we had agreed to, and the town did their part of it all. And then COVID hit, and we went through two different commissioners of DCR, and COVID's gone. And last time I tried to get down Will's Work Road, I realized you're not getting an ambulance or a fire truck down there at any rate of speed for an emergency, which is what led us to those negotiations in 2018 and 19. So before I reach out to the new commissioner, Arigo, I just wanna see if we have a formal signed copy on your end, so they don't tell me, "Well, there's no signature on the other side." And then we'll get back to the plate on that.
Anybody from the?
The last thing I just want to say is you all have my number and David's number as well. So feel free to reach out, direct the town manager, who is always a welcome partner in moving forward, and we'll be happy to, you know, to do anything we can to expedite or add to everything that you're doing.
Awesome.
Great.
Thank you.
And we will. Reach out.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, you know, and, you know, if there's anything, you know, that we're eligible for or in any way, shape, or form, you know, please, same thing, reach out, let us know, and we'll go after it. So, and I can't thank you both enough for coming tonight and touching base and giving us more information. Information is powerful, so appreciate it.
And that concept of the nexus between your wastewater issue and economic development, that opens up a whole nother series of available funding. And that's why I wanted to underscore that with this concept of these other sites, which are directly related to the economic activity of the community.
This is great information. So we're gonna be getting phone calls from here, that's for sure. Give us some guidance.
Awesome. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much.
Everyone.
Have a great night.
You, too.
Nice to see you both.
Nice to see all of you as well. Thank you.
All right. Can I have approval of the following Monday, June 26, 2023, regular and executive session?
So move.
Second.
First and second?
Discussion. I sent to Kathy some changes. There were some inaccuracies in the minutes, and I sent them to Kathy early. It was that rainy day last Friday. So I sent them to her, and I know she sent them, or I believe she sent them to Terry, but I don't think we have the updated minutes. So could we table them?
We did get the corrections, Michaela, but all those corrections need to be done at the board level.
Okay.
So going to Kathy with that, it's fine that she knows it, but you need to bring it before the board so that they can authorize that they heard the same thing you did. That's all.
Okay.
Okay?
Oh, that's fine. And I just sent them so we didn't go through a lot of changes. I have quite a few.
All right. So, well, we gotta go through them anyways.
Yes, yes, as a board you should.
Okay.
Or you can just approve them at the next meeting.
Right.
I'm just looking at the clock here.
Right. I know, I know, we can't approve a whole set now. So do you want?
If we could get a redline version, and then, and then just to show the corrections, suggested edits, and then that way we can review them for next meeting and just, you know, go right through them.
That's what I would recommend.
Comes in the packet, and we see the look at and say, yes.
Super. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll do that. So we'll do that next meeting.
So I make a motion to table the minutes.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I assume there wasn't much discussion to be had on that one, right? All right. Public comment. Would anybody like to speak under public comment? Here we go.
Two hours.
Ken DeBroski.
I think it's great. Oh, yeah. Well, you know who I am. I think it's great you guys went big. It's definitely the way to go. I mean, we're so far behind the curve on this stuff. Go big. The only thing I'd say is, the only, in kind of a little bit of an accuracy, the whiff is part of the tax base. So, I mean, that is part of the tax burden, you know, that's, I pay whiff, so it does get in there. So you can't, you know, it's not separate and apart. The other thing, too, is when you're thinking about these things, you gotta think about them holistically. You know, we've got a lot of, you know, growth in schools and stuff like that. Those things are running way ahead of the two and a half. So when you, when you look at these things, I think you gotta look at the total tax load, what's coming in through the operating budget, not only what you're piling on through the wastewater thing, you gotta look at a holistic approach. And again, with that holistic approach, you know, you need to, I don't want to push you this way, but, you know, you have that tool called the residential exemption. And when you look at who you're trying to protect, you know, it's really that population of residents below the median. And I think when you're evaluating the impact of these things, I mean, that's the population you ought to be targeting. So that's kind of it. I think that was about it. Yeah, so short. Wow.
Quick take, you, Ken.
Great job. Extra time.
Joe Lyons?
Can I carry that over to next time?
Nope.
I think he left two of them.
Karen Faulkner?
She left.
Okay. Lynn Barbie?
Lynn Barbie, 73 Surf Drive. I want to thank the Select Board and the Sewer Commissioners for going through this process tonight. It was really important for those of us who don't really understand how this all works, but it was very, very helpful. And I just want to say, on behalf of Envision Mashpee Group, we really support you all going after this funding, meeting that deadline, getting the help from our representatives if we need it. But there's also other sources of money that we can apply for later on. There's state and federal grant money, and I understand we're in the process of hiring a grant writer, and I think that's a wonderful thing as well. My only other comment is that in the 2015 plan, there was a commitment of $1 million per year investment in shell fishing. And I don't want us to lose sight of that. I know in some of the places, we can't even do it because it's, the shellfish don't survive. But I really want to make sure that we don't lose sight of the shell fishing investment, and we keep the money in there for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Malone?
She left.
Sue Dangle?
Good evening. Susan Dangle, 762 Kootuat Road. And I just want to applaud you guys. Great, great work. It was such a productive meeting tonight to understand the nuances of all of those different options. And I really hope we can do more of it. I think you've heard me say it, I'm like a broken record when it comes to that meeting back in November of '21, but we haven't really had one until tonight that rivaled that. So please do more of it. I know there's gonna be some folks behind me. I'm gonna call us the lost ones. Wakeby Pond, not on the map. Wacoit Bay, not on the map. Quashnet, Ashuma Pond, John's Pond. So those folks need to hear what's coming next. I think it's very ambitious of what we tried to do tonight, and I'm glad you went big. But please make sure we come back with what the plan is for those folks. And I have no idea what the protocol is, but I'm very last on the agenda tonight for my splash special event. Is there any way to move those up, given the meat of what's coming in the rest of this agenda? I think we came on, because Mr. Robinson is also here from head of the ponds regatta, and we were crossing at the same time. So we kind of worked everything out with Mr. Taylor and Ms. Coleman. They're both events that we've had in the past, and we are not going to park on each other this year. We're gonna spread it out a little bit.
All right. So I'll take a look, but I gotta, if I can finish up public comment, we'll see what we can do.
Okay, great. And I think there's one person in the back who's not on the list who wanted to be recognized when you're done with your list, if that's possible. Otherwise, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Glenn McCarthy?
Hi, everyone. Glenn McCarthy, 16 G Place. First, I'd like to say thank you and congratulations for moving forward tonight. That was great. And certainly, myself, a lot of people are very supportive of all of our waters. You know, you tend to break it into three big chunks, you know, the Mashpee River, Pappanessa Bay that we talk about a lot, the ponds, which we can group together, even though there's many of them. And I like to remind people, there's a lot of small ponds as well out there that, when you keep an eye on. And Wacoit Bay, of course, being important. And missing from the discussion tonight was really Wacoit Bay. If you looked at the options, none of them had it in there. It was in the 2015 plan, but the only one that even had a little bit of it in was the Option 8. So it's gonna need to be addressed, and I'm sure that everyone together can figure out how to address that. To start with, the state of Massachusetts requires it, right? The mandate that we have under the new DEP regs is both bays. So in order to comply, we have to deal with Wacoit Bay, and the 2015 plan does it. I have a letter from Donald Barton that was published in the Enterprise Friday that I hope everyone read. I'll just read a few lines from it, and "It's a great night and a happy time, but I think it's important to make these points," because they didn't really, they haven't really come out. We talked a lot about the Mashpee River, a lot about Wakeby Pond. But, you know, it's, very quickly, "I just heard from an informed observer that the water quality test at stations 11, 12, and 13 at Wacoit Bay failed miserably on the sample draw this past week. The water's very stained, murky in abeyments as well. All three stations required special testing to document the abnormally low oxygen levels." Okay? "Never before have these stations failed." Those stations, one is next to Washburn Island, okay? It shouldn't fail with the flow. Another one is just at the middle of the bay, which also shouldn't have an issue. And the third site is near the entrance to the jetties. And these have all apparently failed. "These findings, so early in the season, highlight and suggest environmental pressures are accelerating faster than predicted. The estuaries are heading relentlessly in the wrong way, threatening permanently the Wacoit Bay estuary and ecosystem." So as it stands now, there's no sewer-ing planned, and this, and I'm quoting from the article, spells pure catastrophe, calamity. "Wacoit Bay, de facto, is being abandoned." And I'll stop there to save everyone's time, but the title of this letter that I did not write, Donald Barton wrote it, and he gave me permission to quote it tonight, is "Wacoit Bay Waters in State of Abandonment? ?" So again, congratulations and thank you for all the great work and your support. Somehow, we're gonna have to address Wacoit Bay, and I look forward to everyone figuring that out together. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Glenn. Rick Otis?
Good evening. My name is Rick Otis. I am president for the citizens of the protection of Wacoit Bay. I had spent probably 45 years of a professional career in Washington, DC, in the environmental field, and as a senior executive of US EPA. And I can't tell you how many meetings like this I have sat in, and how many times I've looked at local officials having to wrestle with the kind of things you guys are wrestling with and making up your decisions on what kind of plans and how you're gonna pay for it and so on. So I congratulate you on at least getting as far as you've gotten. And I understand what it's like to be in your shoes trying to do that. But what I do want to hope that you take away from my comments is that I looked at all those plans and all the different things you had, and I noticed the complete absence, as Glenn and others have said, of dealing with anything to do with Wacoit Bay. And I know that the town of Falmouth sent to the town of Mashpee an interview, a draft of an agreement on deciding how much of the total maximum daily load for nitrogen going into the bay from Mashpee versus Falmouth. And they've heard crickets. That document is critical for you guys to know what you're responsible for meeting. And I find it a little hard that you can agree on a plan not knowing what it is that you're responsible for achieving. So I talked to Chad out on the sidewalk and said, "Listen, you know, you gotta figure out where within the government bureaucracy of Mashpee that document sits, so that you guys can strike a deal with Falmouth over how much you're responsible for and how much they are." And I think, you know, as the board selects, you need to know from your own staff of the town, you know, what are you putting us on the hook for? Because people like me, who knew what Wacoit Bay looked like in the 1960s, are not real happy with what it looks like right now. And from Andrew's comment about people being unhappy, tomorrow night, I'm doing a presentation for the Wacoit Bay Yacht Club on this whole subject of the Mast EP regs and the state of the bay and what Falmouth is doing or not doing, and what you guys are doing or not doing. And I think from the comments I'm getting from people, they've gotten to the point where they're no longer unhappy, they're angry. And these are people who vote. These are people who have real high taxes on real expensive properties, and they're not, they've gone beyond being sort of unhappy. And so my message to you is, as you go forward with your final planning and your budgeting for things, do not, at pain of whatever, do not forget the Munnicas River, the Quashnet River, and Wacoit Bay. Town of Mashpee has significant responsibilities for the nitrogen going into that bay, and I trust you will not ignore it. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And good luck with this.
Thanks. And was there someone else that, come on up. Just identify yourself with your address, please.
Linda Smith, 33, Sturgis Lane. Stormwater, we all know that stormwater is very polluting to the river. And what's bothering me tonight is that, as I look around, right at the mouth of the river, we have the parking lot from the herring run and the museum with no drainage. And every time it rains, it makes me sick, because this is something that could be fixed. Some of the water comes down the sidewalk, comes into the roadway, and it goes right into the mouth of the river. And that's all you are talking about tonight, is the river. And if you go across the street, and you go on Lake Ave, right in front of Knockabout, you look across, there's a corrugated steel pipe. And during the rain, water comes through the corrugated steel pipe, untreated, right into the mouth of the river. So sometimes, the only thing we have to do is open our eyes and actually see what's happening to the environment that is really a pretty easy fix. Just throw in some catch basins. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Discussion and approval of the Order of Betterment Assessment and Certification of Betterment Assessment for Cedar Street, Chestnut Street, Devon Street, Ash Street, Hawthorne Street, and Gina Way.
This is pretty expensive for a town owner.
It is.
$20,000.
It's, yeah, it's probably the most expensive that I can remember. It's unfortunate, but...
So this is going forward. A motion to approve?
I'll second. Any discussion? Mr. Whedon?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Okay. Discussion and approval of expenditure, ARPA funds for purchase of electronic voting systems.
Are we gonna be able to have these for October?
Yes.
Oh, we will.
Will they be rental, or they, do we approve them?
We'll own them outright. What we did is, we had a committee of four of us that sat down, listened to all the options, there were three different providers. Meridia has done the most throughout the state, has done the State House. They are ease of use, number one. No updates, like some of the others had, were using PowerPoint and Java and other types of software that caused problems. This by far and away was the better selection of all the three units we looked at. And so what we're looking for today is approval to use the ARPA funds to purchase them.
All right. Can I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
The use of ARPA funds?
The use of ARPA funds.
Electronic voting systems. Is there a first? Tom, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Absolutely. I think it's great.
Oh, and just one last thing. David, you asked about rechargeable. Not any company has a rechargeable.
Really?
Right.
It's a whole lot of lithium going into a land.
I didn't forget about you on that. They are watch batteries, and they said they do last at least a year, because they're very, you know, not used that often.
Mr. Barrows, you're up next. Mr. Barrows, you're up next.
And it's a discussion in regards to Mashpee Pickleball Courts, and it's Ernie Barrows.
Ernie Barrows, 201 Schumit Road. You know, I've been here before on this issue. It's about the noise from the pickleball park. It has really gotten way out of hand. It's gotten a lot worse, and it is, I'm just telling you, it's really, really bad. It's gotten to the point where it starts at 8:00 in the morning and goes till 7:30 at night. I mean, it's just repetitive. It's, to try to make it easy for you to understand, just picture yourself sitting on your deck or in your yard, relaxing, and someone taking a machine gun and just going from 8:00 in the morning till 7:30 at night. And there are people lining up out of that park, and pickleball has been compared to a gunshot, without question. I've got information showing how this has gotten so loud. It's gotten past the health code for nuisance noise, which is at about 50 decibels. And some of these readings are up around 88 and 89 decibels. And this is, these hits are not one a minute or one every 30 seconds. This is about one hit per quarter second and constant. It has gotten a lot worse. I've been complaining about this for years, and it's truly affecting my health at this point. And I was just hoping that I could come here tonight and ask if you can shut this park down until we can come up with a feasible solution to what's going on. The noise levels, this is a gentleman from Falmouth, Rob Mastiurani, who's, was a neighbor of the pickleball park and has quite a bit of information and can read, maybe explain it to you a little bit differently as me. But my biggest concern is getting this shut down till we can figure out a solution for this. What's there for any type of sheeting on that, and that's basically what it is that they put up on that wall, on the fences, is sheeting. It's not by any means any soundproofing or anything. And if anything, it's escalated the noise. And in your own report that you had done on that, that's exactly what the results turned out to be. I did talk to New England Soundproofing and talked to the gentleman there, and this has become a huge, huge problem, not just in these towns, this is going statewide and nationwide. And the sound is just really emanating from that park over to me like you're sitting there with a bullhorn. In your own report, it did say in there that you had done on the soundproofing, which was not a pickleball study by any means. And I do have a study, a true study, of what a pickleball study looks like. It brings up a lot of points of what should be done. And I did talk to the company, New England Soundproofing, and talked to a specialist there, and he said those parks should not be put up without at least a 20-foot wall outside with proper insulation and soundproofing with a roof fully enclosed. This was right from the soundproofing expert. And Rob has been working with one of the leading gentlemen on the pickleball sound in this country, on taking readings and everything else. And if I can introduce you to him and have him explain and show you in actual graphs and facts where this has exceeded the federal and state limits.
Rob, if you don't mind, I don't mind hearing from you again, but just because you're not a Mashpee resident, if you don't mind, could we just get right to the point if you don't mind?
Okay, yeah, that would be fine.
That's, thank you.
Yeah, sorry to take a lot of the positivity out of the room, you know. We were flying very high, and we want to get down real low, and we want to look at the people, we want to look at people like Ernie Barrows. I've connected with Ernie Barrows of, you know, near pickleball courts across the country. I do live in Falmouth. We are fighting the pickleball courts, you know, at the Lawrence Courts. We shut down the Lawrence School Pickleball Court. And with an injunction and the town went to dismiss the injunction, and another judge found that we were able to keep that injunction. So we have two judges with a very favorable outcome before we go to trial, our pretrial hearing October 21st. All that, all that is to say that I do, I work with Lance Willis of Tucson. He is a Spenderian in Willis. He is out of Tucson, and he is the nationally recognized go-to guy for understanding pickleball noise, impulse noise, gunshots, little brother. I took some measurements using some of the, not using, you know, Amazon's most reviewed sound level meter, and I'm not using my iPhone. I'm using NTI, latest greatest type 1 sound level meter. And I got some readings that were very concerning. I do have a graph that shows very clearly that there is violations occurring at these courts. And I was at 240 feet at Ernie's driveway, and the allowable decibel level is 10 dB over ambient. Now, where Ernie lives was perhaps as quiet as a library, you know, at 40, right? Or even 35. But let's be fair, let's say it's 40 or 45. And we have, I have very clearly can show you that we're not very technical here, we're very old school. But I could pass these around, but the top graph has the x-axis.
Is this the same one?
Yes. At 50 dB.
50.
And when I recorded the sound in Ernie's driveway, it was at 9:40. And what you see there is a 10-minute snapshot, but I have a reading that goes from 9:00 to noontime. And this snapshot will show you that all the players are playing are responsible for those hits above 50 dB. The graph below at 11:00, the court is vacant. There's a helicopter right there, you know, there's a spike, and there's a couple of other little outliers from, you know, Ernie does live near Joint Base, so there is a fair share of noise there, very different noise. But I'm here to support Ernie, I'm here to support people. It's the craziest thing. So since I became involved with Falmouth, I become the, somehow the spokesman for this problem, reluctantly for certain. But we get a lot of, I've gotten a lot of press, New York Times, Wall Street Journal, Cape Cod Times, Boston Globe, CNN, ABC News Nightline just called me, and they're going to be interviewing me July 29th. I have interview with the Daily Beast tomorrow morning. And this is all to talk about why people aren't talking about the pickleball noise. You know, I think that this is a good opportunity for the town of Mashpee to do something very worthwhile for one of its taxpaying citizens, not one, but a neighborhood of. Make the right, make the wrong a right. And I, it's, look, I have a master's in public health. I do come from a high degree of empathy, so I do reach out to people like Ernie, you know? I do reach out to a lot of different people, that's why I'm here. So there's a lot that people don't talk about, pickleball noise. You told me to keep it short, but I can, I can talk about the frequency, I can talk about the amplitude, I can talk about the number of hits. The number of hits, like as Ernie indicated, really with the courts at Mashpee, 2.5 hits per second is to be expected. What do you get at 2.5 hits per second? You get 150 hits per minute, 9,000 hits an hour, and Ernie's been, Ernie and his neighbors, one of them moved, have endured 100,000 hits during a day, 100,000 pops. What people fail to understand is that the frequency of this pop at 1,000 Hz occurs in the very sensitive hearing range. It's like a knock at the door, hearing a twig break. These are very primal kind of noises that we've learned to use in our sensory world that's going to give us important information. You know, it does, it raises the blood pressure, it quickens the pulse, anxiety sets in when exposed to this frequency, the randomness in the number of pops. So, you know, what's our secret sauce here, you know, in Falmouth? Why are we winning this case? Well, frankly, people are measuring impulse noise, pickleballs pop, gunshots, little brother, improperly. It comes to a peak at 2 milliseconds, and in order to measure that, you have to measure it within that timeframe. Now, if you measure it over a tenth of a second, you are now looking at a little bit more than tennis, which is what people say. I was always wondering why I could hear it when I'm mowing the lawn. I lived 350 feet away from the courts at Lawrence School. I moved. My friends, my neighbors are still trying to, are fighting this. But thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about this. And I mean, if you want, if you have any questions, like I said, I think it's a great opportunity to take control of this. You know, let's turn that park into pickleball central, light it up, maybe enclose it, I don't know, sell hamburgers. You can, you know, anything, anything goes. I don't think Ernie's going to mind a building next door to him, you know, nor the traffic. Thank you.
It is bad. I can't express that enough. It's been taxing on me. This has been going on for five years. But in this past season, since they closed that park in Falmouth, they have been sending people here to Mashpee. And just so you understand when I say from 8:00 in the morning till 7:30 at night, there aren't many breaks. I pray for rain. It does sound funny, doesn't it? It's awful.
It is.
I worked my life to get this house. I built down there because it was peaceful, it was nice. I was the first house on that road. I know what it is to be peaceful, that's why I chose that. I have conformed to just about anything that I could do to help my neighbors, to do anything. I've even policed the area down there. I'm looking for some peace that I would like. I bought that property, I worked my butt off my whole life to get there myself. I had it. It was taken away from me for no reason. This goes on 8:00 in the morning, like somebody's sitting there with a machine gun, dum, 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 and it does not stop. And I am not exaggerating, if anything, it's slower with that noise. You've got to understand how bad it is. I'm not asking you to get rid of it completely, I'm asking you, please, shut the park down until we can come up with a feasible solution. And I am willing to help Mr. Collins figure out, and I have so much knowledge here that I've spent thousands of hours doing my research. I thought there was going to be a study that you guys could see and understand that, but that study that was done was basically just on what you put up on those walls of the fencing. That was not a study on pickleball. I saw, had a meeting with Mr. Collins on Friday, showed him that study that was done, a true study that was done in Manchester by the Sea. This is a proper pickleball noise study. It does lay out a lot of different areas, and actually, they only have six courts there. We've got eight here. There is a lot more traffic here than there is there, and you're welcome to look at this. I can't make, have you make a copy of this at all, from what I just found out this evening that this is, was paid for by the town of Manchester by the Sea. And you can access us to get all this information on what they suggest. But like I said, I did research a lot of it. If you want to look at this, I can pass this around so you can look at it and take a briefly look at it. And it will show some of the pictures and adjacent to the courts, to the effect that houses with distances and everything else. And my house is closer than a number of those houses right there, basically set up the same way. But what I would really like to do is, I would like to get these courts shut down. I'm not saying forever. You're going to stay at the mic, Ernie? I thought I would be loud enough. I would like to get these courts shut down until we can come up with a proper solution, which probably should have been done before these courts were even built, but that's kind of a moot point right now. What I would like to do is get the courts shut down, figure out as quickly as you possibly can, so you can do whatever. But this court needs to be enclosed with the proper insulation, and these walls, as a minimum, said from the soundproofing experts at New England Soundproofing that did it on your fence. I talked to one of the gentlemen there, which is a sound expert, and he said the walls should be a minimum of 20 feet high with a roof fully enclosed with the proper sound-absorbing insulation in there. Right now, it has nothing. If you're familiar with a bullhorn, like I had said before, that's what it's doing now. In the report that was written here, it was, sound was bouncing off the open end, and those actual sheeting that you put on there is making this echo, it's bouncing off the trees and coming right to me. Like I said, in July of 2020, when we came, and I was before you the last time, before you did this study, I explained to you that this was what was going on. And, you know, I didn't have any proof, I just knew, only by the sound. Well, this now has gotten far worse. There's a lot more people, it's there. There's a lot more people, it's there. In the morning at eight o'clock, you have 32 people with those paddles.
I'm very well aware of it's, is, there's a lot of people playing pickleball.
And you also realize it's like having a bunch of, with that machine gun, having other, you know, having like a barrel loaded and ready to go. There's 32 people sitting at the gates waiting. There is no intermission, okay? This is one right after the other. There's 32 people sitting there, waiting to get in the minute those courts are done. When one person is done, 10 seconds later, the next court, the next bunch of people is right in there.
All right, so unless the board has some input, I'd like to ask if myself, town manager, and yourself, if you'd be open to sitting down and discussing few options, what they are? I have no idea, but I do have a, I have a couple possibilities that at least something to open the dialogue and have some discussion. If you'd be okay with that?
I am more than willing to do that whenever you'd like, but I would really like those parks shut down now and have that discussion. If you wanted tomorrow morning, I'll be there and we will put something together or do something to stop this sound, but it needs to be stopped. Please, I'm asking you. I know you have the power and the ability to stop this and do this. This is really, truly affecting my health. And I have a gentleman that's living with me at the moment that can attest to that. He goes out, he's a smoker, he sits on the deck and has a cigarette, and it's just unbearable. He's rushing to get his cigarette because it's that bad. I'm confined to my house. I have to sit in my house, even with my windows closed and my AC unit on, I can still hear the popping. I hear the popping in my sleep now. I wake up in the middle of the night. This has been going on for years, but now it's just.
That's, that is what I hear from so many people. And that is actually what happened to myself as well and my neighbors.
I'm not sleeping well. I'm waking up thinking I'm hearing it. I see that it's light outside, I'm hearing that noise. It's bad. And the fact that I have to be confined to my home, my home was there before pickleball was even thought of around here. I had my serenity, my peace. I need that for me, as you do in your home, every one of you. You want to go home, be there and go home to the serenity that you have. That's all I'm asking. Please, shut this park down till we can figure this problem out. And I will work with Mr. Collins on whatever he wants and the board to figure out. And I have what soundproofing experts say need to be done. And if relocating has to be done, whatever, I will do and help you figure out what we can do to do that, to not have to relocate, to fix it so it doesn't, this problem does not exist anymore till it goes away. I will, I will work with you, whatever you need from me.
All right, so at that point, if, unless the board has, would like to say anything, I mean, I, my suggestion is, I, I can't, I don't think I can do it this week, but next week, I'd be happy to have a sit-down discussion with you, with the town manager, to see if we can have a further discussion.
If I can step, so this, you're a changed person from what we've seen in the past. I can see that. You're beaten up by this and I, I sympathize with your issue. I don't understand it. I, I understand the noise, but it must be driving out your mind and I, and I feel badly for that. I don't, I don't know what the answer is. I mean, I don't know that the town wants to make a, a structure with a roof and side walls on it, because then you open up the, you don't have any, you need supervision there to make sure that there's nothing going on with inside of that building. So there's a lot more than just putting up walls and ceilings on it.
Ernie can shut down these courts if he likes with the science and the data.
But the, but the cost, but I'm talking about people going into the, inside the boxes and, and causing problems inside the box.
I appreciate your concern where you think money is the issue here.
It's not, I'm not thinking money at all.
Oh, no. Well, you said the cost of building these.
I didn't say the cost at all. I'm not, it's not.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood you.
The, the cost isn't, is what bothers me. I mean, it is, it costs, but I don't know that we want to own the, the building and then have to provide security there as well, because it will be a building and once you're behind there. My concern is, I like your idea about sitting down, John, but does, being as involved as you are with pickleball, is, do you think you have a conflict with that?
Well, that's why, I mean, I'm staying quiet now, but I also understand the noise and I understand the, the traffic and I, I, I'm maybe the best person to understand the sound and, and the effects of it. That's, but if the board feels someone else should do it, that's, I'm okay with that too. I'm just trying to put out a olive branch of communication to see if I can come up with maybe some temporary remedies in the meanwhile.
Would you be willing to limit the days to four days?
I mean, personally, I mean, what I would, what I was willing to do was have a sit-down conversation with the town manager, with Ernie, and we can have a communication.
I think that we're, we're dealing with someone who's ready for a compromise perhaps in terms of limiting days, if that was a possibility that we could vote on tonight.
Can, can I ask you what's your?
No, let him finish.
What's, I, I mean, you seem to be in confusion on what you should do.
No, I'm not in confusion.
Oh, okay.
No, I mean, I, I have, there's still a lot of people here that still have to be tenured to on the agenda at the same time. You know, I, I opened up, we have a, let's have a conversation and see where that goes. That's, that's what I'm asking. If.
I, I agree to that. I, I am fully agreeable to that, but what I'd like to do is at least temporarily either shut this down or put a major limit on the time at that park to alleviate in between there some time. I know you have the ability to do that. I'm just asking, as a taxpayer, as to you, I'm asking you to do this until we can come up with a solution. You're asking me, I, I will give you all the help in the world. I will work, do whatever it takes. I just, this, this has been five years of this going on and it's really just at the end now. It has truly affected my health. This has become a health issue. This is not just a noise that's annoying or anything else. It has gone above and beyond that. It really has. And I really want to work with you and do this. There is, I, I do, but I would really appreciate it if you could at least, and, and I will compromise if, if you can cut out some days and times for now versus shutting the park down, yes, altogether, but it, it has really gotten to a point where, I mean, I could see if this was something that was a, like a, a highway or something that, you know, you're asking us to shut this down, but this is a recreational park. It, it's not like a hotter lung. It is with me.
No, I mean, I, Ernie, I, I.
I hope you understand, or at least could come down and sit and listen to how bad it is.
I totally understand, and that's what, again, where I'm talking about having a discussion. I can, I can't, I, I can just tell you my schedule and again, if the board's okay with me being it, if not, I am an avid pickleballer, so that's full disclosure. If someone else wants to, in my, you know, step in as my stunt double, if you will, that's fine. If not, next week, I can make some time if you're available next week, and that's what I'm offering. You know, beyond that, that's what I'm.
So you don't, what you're saying is that you want to meet and then we'll, you're not going to shut anything down or limit anything, but you want to meet next week?
That, that's what I'm saying to you right now. Unless, does anyone else in the board have any input?
Could, prior to that meeting, I mean, I, I, I sympathize with everything you're saying and that noise must be very, very difficult to live with. I'm wondering if rather than saying nothing's going to change and you'll have a conversation sometime next week, I don't know what's available to mitigate the sound. Could we start looking into kinds of things that are available? Could we start looking into maybe limiting hours, I'm not, hours or days and start the process of looking into what can be done before another week and time, week and a few days go by and starting a conversation then?
Well, that's, to be my intention would be, between now and then, to have, my intention would, to come with, you know, you know, maybe something to modify the noise, but again, I have a, a few thoughts at the same time, we're talking about, you're talking about a roof and a closure. I mean, that's, there's a lot.
How about one day for Ernie? How about one day, Sunday? Shut it down, one day.
I don't know if we could just shut it down.
Maybe a Monday.
Without a public hearing and.
Without stepping over what, and I appreciate everything that you're attempting to do to try to resolve this, but you do understand too, that if I push this and I go to court, and I'm going to win if I do, and I'm going to tell you that right now, you're not going to have a say at all if I win. It is going to be up to the courts. I'm being, I'm talking to you and I'm, I'm not pleading, but I am asking you, please shut this court down till we can find a problem. I realize you, and if you can limit some days for me until we can have our meeting, I would greatly appreciate that.
All righty.
And I don't want to have to go to court. I really don't. And I know you don't want to either.
I'm okay with it.
But I will go to court and I assure you, it will get shut down and then you won't have any choice. It'll be up to the courts and it'll be tied up in the courts. But I'm asking you nicely now and.
All right, Mr. Collins.
To at least shut this down and/or make some type of couple of days off, like Rob had said, and, and till we can have the meeting and go from there.
Mr. Collins.
So obviously, anything involving a roof, anything involving walls, we're not going to be able to do that this summer or anytime in the distant future. So I did have a conversation with these two gentlemen. I listened intently to Mr. Barrows. I thought it was Thursday, maybe it was Friday, but at any rate, I listened. No, you're right, it was Friday. But the bottom line here is I think there is room for a little bit of compromise and consensus versus doing nothing versus shutting it down and not allowing it at all. I think, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Barrows, but I think that if we have further discussions and deliberations, I think we can avoid litigation. And I don't want to get into that in case there is, but I will say this. My suggestion to the board, and it's only a suggestion, and you may not like it, is to shut it down on Sundays and give them a day of rest. And that was just mentioned a couple minutes ago. It's a start in good faith for us to continue the dialogue. I know that it's going to upset pickleball players, but I'm just trying to reach a compromise and a consensus for the sole purpose of having constructive dialogue so that we can come up with some amicable options, menu options to bring back to the board that you can digest and to look over. And you may like them, you may not like them. He may like them, he may not like them. But I think it's a start and it's a show of good faith. That's all.
I would, I would support.
So with that said, I'll make the motion to, for the board to take a position on shutting down the pickleball in a good faith effort after hearing Mr. Barrows until we meet further.
You're referring to Sunday?
On Sunday, Sunday specifically, yeah.
I would second that.
What about early mornings? Would you just, would you just go with the?
Not on Sunday.
They're going to sit down and come up with.
And work from there? So you'd have the, Sunday would be pickleball free and then see if we can come up with something after.
I really can't hear you.
Yeah.
Just the, the pickleball restriction would be, so on Sundays, it would be no pickleball at the, at the court.
That would be a start.
Yes, that would be a good start. And see, you know, whether you want a late start or something. I can understand that this is something.
I, I would settle for no pickleball on Sunday at all.
You, so we can, and then you can negotiate with.
And I would like to get a meeting right now of when we can sit down and discuss what we do from here, if we could, in the same breath as setting, closing on Sunday and getting a meeting cemented right now, if we could.
I will contact you tomorrow, Mr. Barrows, or somebody from my staff will.
And it probably would be next week? You said maybe next week?
Yes, I can't speak for any board member, but we will arrange something and.
I'll make the time next week.
Get a date and a time for you.
Thank you very much. And yes, closing down on Sunday would work for me for now.
You have a motion.
All right. A foot in the door, you know, all right. It's a, a foot in the door, it's a start, a greater start.
I thank you for that start.
Any further discussion? Not having any, so I have a first and I have a second.
Yes.
Or a first and a second, first and second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I guess I'm a yes. Or I'm an, I'm an abstain. For the record, I am an avid pickleballer. I'm, not that it matters.
I'll be honest with you, I don't have a problem with the sport. To each his own, but when it becomes an issue like this, where there is a negative and it really truly affects what goes on, I, I understand and I'm not looking backwards because it doesn't help, but all of this should have been done before this even was put in a residential zone. The information was out there and everything and it just was overlooked.
I get it. Town manager will be in touch with you tomorrow and I'll be in touch with the town manager first thing in the morning, my schedule.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And thank you.
I'm going to jump to special event, head of the Ponds Regatta, September 10th, 2023.
My name is Alan Robinson. I live in Falmouth, John.
Oh, hi, Alan.
It's good, it's good to see you.
Nice to see you.
And it's good to see you all. I've seen some of you on, on Zoom and it's, this is our fourth year of the regatta. We started it during the heat of COVID and it's been a successful regatta and we want to do the same thing this year. I just have to call attention, I just read the information that was in your packet, I just read it late this afternoon, and it seems like the paragraph that's here was abstracted from our first application back in 2020, when we said 25 participants, which was, was, was the case back in 2020. Because if you read that very last part of that first sentence, two-seat boats, cohabitors only, that was like father and daughter or husband and wife rowing together because of COVID. So this paragraph is the out-of-date paragraph. I mean, it, the number that. that I believe we submitted this year is 50. Everything else is the same. Not everyone will have departed by 9:30, will be departing by 9:30. So I'm sorry to raise these little details, but it worked really well last year when we had approximately 50. And we worked very closely with the Make-A-Splash folks and, and with Sue Dengel. And I think Sue can attest that we'll, we've, we understand how we'll work together and it'll, it'll all work in the parking lot.
So with those notable changes or corrections in the application, does anybody have any questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve the? Second. The Ponds Regatta. Second.
First, second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Mr. Whedon?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes.
Thank you all.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you. It's a wonderful regatta, but it's a wonderful venue that we hosted on. Mashpee Wake Beach Pond is a, is a true gem. Best place, best place to row in the entire Cape.
Great to hear.
So thank you.
Thank you. And we'll jump right into following 9:30. At 10 o'clock, special events, Make-A-Splash, September 10th, 2023, 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. at Adakin Park. Susan Dengel.
Hi, thanks. I don't have anything with me, but I think you have our flyer in your packet. It's the same thing that we've been doing for the last two years. This will be our third year. Last year, we doubled the number of swimmers we had. We're hoping to be over 20 this year. We have kayakers that accompany them or paddleboarders and we have two vessels from DNR who will be accompanying the, the swimmers as well. So we're going to just stretch it out a little bit. We arrived at the same time, as they were coming in last year, we were coming in to, to go out. They were coming out of the water. It was a little, a little tight. So this year, we've put a half hour padding in there. Should be better.
Great.
To approve Make-A-Splash, September 10th.
Second. All right, we have a first and we have a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Sorry for the wait.
That's okay.
See you then.
All right. Mashpee, I know we're jumping around here, so if I jump out of road, just let me, keep me honest here. Mashpee Community Garden Advisory Committee, Cheryl Carberry, term expires June 30th, 2026.
A motion to accept her resignation with a letter.
I'll second your motion. First, second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Mr. Whedon?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Affordable Housing Committee, Stephanie Coleman, term expires June 30th, 2024. And again, I'm sorry, this is resignations, so.
A motion to approve with a letter of gratitude.
Second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Mr. Whedon?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Another resignation, Conservation Commission, Charles Dalton, term expires June 30th, 2024.
A motion to approve with regret.
Second. First and second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Mr. Whedon?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Under the, this line item of appointments and resignations, on the July 13th meeting, the Conservation Commission, they also voted to appoint to the Environmental Oversight Committee. The results of that vote were that the Chair Paul Colombo serve on the environmental oversight. I'd like to add an item to our agenda to ratify their decision and reaffirm their decision to appoint Mr. Paul, Chair Paul Colombo to the environmental oversight.
So you're making a motion to add the advisory?
Correct.
To the agenda? So I have a first? Do I have a second?
I give you a second.
Okay. First and second. Any discussion? Not? Roll call?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Okay, so now your motion would be?
My motion is to reaffirm the ConsCom's vote to appoint Chair Paul Colombo to the Environmental Oversight Committee for the term of one year, consistent with the other timelines.
Okay. I have motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have first and second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. David?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Barnstable County Home Consortium Advisory Council, Gary Schuman.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a first and second. Any discussion?
Yes, we're still not following policy 001. So this has nothing, nothing to do with Mr. Schuman. It has nothing to do with the appointment. It has to do with following the policy that we have. And the policy hasn't been followed. And I raised this point, I think this is the third time I've raised it. I think it's really important because if you're not following a policy consistently, it, I believe, puts the town in jeopardy for the times. You can't pick and choose when you follow a policy. So we haven't followed policy 001 here.
So the last appointment we just did, how do we follow policy?
That's, that's different, as far as I can see. It, well.
I don't think so. In fact, if you read the policy, it, we, we can't pick and choose how we're going to approve, you follow the policy. The policy is a basis for us to move forward. And, you know, I, again, if, there's all parts of this policy, and I know we're going to get to it soon enough, but I, I mean, the intent is to keep us, you know, that we're moving forward and we're following some type of structure. So, but.
The last one, the EOC was the, that one's different because it's, it's one of the four or five that we have to vote on. So that's, that's where I see a difference with that one.
But we have to vote on everyone.
I don't want to.
So all appointments, we have to vote on, and that's what the policy relates to.
Right. And, and I think when we get to the discussion regarding policy 001, I'll be more than happy to take your, your thoughts and your suggestions on any revisions or amendments. But in the meantime, I would just distinguish the difference between something that is coming before you that's a reappointment versus an appointment. And I would also distinguish a little difference in regards to a, a position that is filled by virtue of being a certain member to a committee, a commission, or council in which that, that group is delegating a person for whatever role it is. And that happens like with, I think, CIP. There's somebody from the Finance Committee that is possibly on there, but it's generally selected by the Finance Committee itself. That's all.
Oh, Mr. Chair, just so you know, Mr. Schuman is here. So I don't know if this is an interview that you would do, because I don't know where to send this person to get confidence.
Right. And that's, that's the, that's the, but again, we just, because the last appointment we just did was someone who just got appointed by a committee, no different than a recommendation to, to, to join a committee. And that still relates, it falls back on the policy.
Right.
So.
Because anybody can go to the home consortium, John. But, but it has to be a member from the.
Mary, I appreciate, but I, I, but we, we have continued to, you know, we're trying to follow the policy with, you know, basic common sense. But so Barnstable County Home Consortium Advisory Council, it's, it's an appointment, right? We're the appointing authority. So how else do we?
The, the only thing that I would add is, I believe it was advertised and I, and, and I believe he was the only candidate.
He's the only candidate, yes.
So it's advertised, he's the only candidate, and he's in front of us today. So what?
I, I have no issue at all with Mr. Schuman. I have no issue with, would have no issue with moving it forward. As I've stated, we have, and I, I wouldn't have voted on the last candidate if I didn't see that as different. I thought that was different in that it was a ConCom vote to another committee, to represent to another committee. So I saw that as different or I wouldn't have voted on that. We have a policy. We follow it sometimes. We, you can't, as a board, I, I believe you put the town in jeopardy when you have a policy that you follow sometimes and you follow it deciding what the intent is. It's nothing to do with intent. It's a policy that has clear steps. And until we change that policy, and we can do that tonight, I believe we have to follow it.
But we just did the same appointment.
I, I think I.
We didn't follow.
I think I, I think I explained that and I think the town manager did as well. It's, it's a different situation. Or as I said to you, I would have voted, I would have said the same thing then. So I'm not picking and choosing. I'm really advocating for adhering to the policy that we say we follow. Again, it has nothing to do with the ZBA or Ms. Sanglier. I have a question. Is this appointment coming from the affordable housing? No, this is just an appointment that someone can, anybody from the public can step into.
Buy to, yes.
So this is not a recommendation from a board. This is a man that's coming before us with his resident, with his policy. I mean, his letter of interest that he wants to apply. So nobody's giving him, we will give him the recommendation.
He doesn't have a committee.
He's not on a committee.
There's no committee to recommend and to.
Anybody can.
I'm just.
Then thank you, then thank you for clarifying that, because the second one is different from that. And I read Mr. Schuman's letter and it, again, it has nothing to do with the individual or the committee.
And again, I, I, I mean, reading through the whole policy, like, all weekend long, there's, there's a lot of, what I'm afraid of is, when we get to this, when we get to talking about the policy, there's so few members joining committees and so, a lack of interest, if you will. I don't want to make it so hard that everyone, that we have committees that are all vacant seats because, it was like, oh, it's just too much.
I have a question.
Work to join a committee.
Wayne, how long has this been vacant?
Since, what the heck is your name, anyway? Since I, since I hadn't left, since I hadn't left it. Probably three months.
Six months.
Six months.
Okay, so in six months, no one else has come forward to?
It's getting late.
Okay.
And, and I would think that what you're doing here is, when Mr. Schuman comes to the mic, is interviewing him for the position.
For the position.
Making an appointment or not.
Okay. So Mr. Schuman?
Mrs. Schuman, come on up, please.
Hi, Gary, thank you. That did have nothing to do with you.
Gary, would you mind just give us like a quick reason why you'd like to join this committee?
Sure. You know, I was fortunate enough to be appointed to the Affordable Housing Committee a handful of months ago because of the, you know, critical nature of the issue. And congratulations to the earlier part of the meeting. I think water and housing are the two major factors. I think with the change in administration, having a new governor, new funding and a new focus, there seems to be a momentum or at least positive activity around housing. You know, recently, Leclerc Village broke around. You can go over then how it actually starts seeing walls going up. There's been money granted towards 209 Old Barnstable, towards looking at feasibility for, you know, what's called the VFW site. So there's a lot of activity. What I'd like to do is, the position has been vacant. I am not being supported by another committee. I'm just doing this as a citizen. And I'd like to learn from the folks on the committee what other towns are doing so I can make myself more effective and help, you know, the people of Mashpee more. So it's really a chance to network, to listen to what other towns are doing that may be different, that we're not looking at, to help continue the momentum that we seem to have going now. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Gary. Does anyone on the board have any questions?
Yes. So do you have any, any background at all in, in housing, construction, or land use or density? Are you aware of the bylaws in the town?
Yeah, my, I'm a railter by trade, but that's fairly new. That's only the past few years. Before that, my background is all in technology with software startups, doing a lot of marketing, market development, trying to build companies. So I originally started out, my first associate's degree was in architectural engineering and technology. I intended to go that way. I took a sidestep into software and now I'm back into that. So is a track record for a long time? No. It's only fairly recent, but being aware of the challenges and the issues and wanting to help.
Have you been in the town of Mashpee for a while now?
Six years.
Six years.
Yeah. Yeah.
And you've been on, you're on the Affordable Housing Committee?
Now I am. Yeah. Yeah. And I see the value of it and the need for it. And that's why I want to continue to do more, you know, as a volunteer.
I'm just happy that we need more people that want to volunteer and get involved. So I just don't want to discourage anybody from doing so.
No, I, I agree. And, you know, I understand a board member, Colombo's point in adhering to the policy. I'm thankful, thankful for the clarity in explaining that this seems uniquely different. I do not discourage anyone from going out and joining other committees to gain your insight and knowledge and your breadth of knowledge. So I commend you for actually, you know, offering up your time to do that, to, to, to better yourself on the local committee.
Thank you.
So. I'm all set. A motion to, anybody else? No? A motion to approve Gary Schuman's appointment to the Barnstable County Home Consortium Advisory Council.
I'll second the motion. All right, first and second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Mr. Whedon?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
All right, thanks.
Thank you for stepping up. Next up.
Sharon's here too.
What's that?
Sharon's here, in the back.
Yep. So zoning board of appeals. Sharon Sanglier?
Sanglier.
Okay.
Never come up.
So, yeah, Sharon, if you don't mind coming up? So I know we're going to, I know we're going to talk about the policy. I, and what I did notice in the policy is, what, you are, you are a participant on the zoning board.
I'm, I'm currently an associate member of the board.
So, and when I read the policy, the problem, problem what I find is, and there's definitely holes, there's serious holes in our policy. But again, I don't want to negatively or punish applicants when she has served over, almost six years, I believe, as associate.
Fall of 17. Yes.
As an associate member, and that's basically, I look at this, the zoning board, and I think the planning board is the other, one other committee that I could think of that has a bench or a farm system.
No, we're independently elected.
No, 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 I get that. But as far as an associate, associate member. So in this case, zoning board, you are correct. There's a distinction. And this, in this committee, you have as many as five associates, I believe. There.
Well, there's five members and then. Five or six of them, yeah.
Okay. So, and again, these associates, I look at it as, they're, they're, they're paying their dues. They're looking for an opportunity to become a full-fledged member and they're sitting there participating and learning the trade, if you will. You know, someone coming from the outside and says, hey, I want to be on that committee, I think, you know. I think, you know, in that case, they should learn their dues. And there's a lot of, you know, very specific, very, you know, you got to dig into the zoning to, to, to understand zoning and the whole thing. I don't understand it, and it would take a long time for even just to understand things at an elementary level. So, I, I feel that, you know, that's something that we can't, we shouldn't punish someone because we don't have verbiage in here about associate members ascending into the position. So, with that... Excuse me?
We did everything.
So, we do have...
Recommendation.
A recommendation from the zoning board where they took, and I, can you see the...
The zoning board recommended associate member Sharon, Sharon Sanglier strongly recommend where the other associate members were...
All recommend.
Recommended her.
Recommended her.
Yep.
So, they, they...
And that took place on the Wednesday, July 12.
So, they took a vote. My understanding, they followed the policy as far as that goes. And again, I, I believe the worthiness of someone that serves almost six years on a committee waiting to become a zoning board member, I, you know, and unfortunately, the associate members beyond that, there's, there's nothing, and no mention of that because, again, it only pertains to the zoning board. It's, it's a very unique board because they have so many associate members.
Okay, so, it's where it's running so late, I make a motion to approve her member.
If you don't mind, I, I just would like, if we can put that on hold, can you tell us in why you're, you know, looking to become a full-fledged member of the zoning board?
Well, I can tell you about my first year in, John Furbish said, would you be interested in becoming a full-fledged member? And I was like, no, because there is so much to learn about zoning that I would say, up until the fifth year, I didn't, I still don't know everything, but I didn't even feel comfortable. Now, I feel comfortable. I also never did anything with it, but I, I have a degree in geography with a concentration in, in public administration. So, I planned on being a town planner way back when I was 21. I, I've never been a town planner, but this is something that interests me. It's not, you know, I, I enjoy doing what I'm doing. You chose not to appoint me, I'd still be an associate member. I, I find it interesting.
That's a great response. Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions? For the candidate?
Do we have a motion?
Well, I'll...
A motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
I have a first and second for Sharon Sangler, Zoning Board of Appeals. Any discussion? Not hearing any? Mr. Whedon?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You earned it. Yes, you have. Okay, discussion and approval of the following special events, temporary sign permits, one-day liquor licenses.
I do have a notice on the one-day liquor license. They will not be seeking a liquor license for the Christmas parade.
Okay, so the permit is for...
Just for sign, temporary sign.
Sign and event.
In the event.
Excluding liquor license.
Right.
Okay, do I hear a motion stating so?
So, move.
Second.
All right, I have a first and second to approve the Mashpee, annual Mashpee Chamber of Commerce Christmas Parade, minus the liquor license. Any discussion? Not hearing any? Michaela?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. All right. We did those last two, communications and correspondence, old business, new business. I guess we jump into discussion amending select board policy 001. Anyone want to jump in, or do we...
The only thing that I would change, change, it's, and it's, it's in here, and I didn't realize it was in here, is that the selectmen have a liaison to these boards. So, when there is a vacancy and they are interviewing, the liaison should be invited to sit in on that, and that's how the liaison can bring it back to us as a board. That's actually, I mean, we're already assigned.
That's interesting.
And it says right here, is it, it is, it is the responsibility of the board, commission, committee, chairperson to coordinate the scheduling of each interview and to notify the board of selectmen as to the time and location of the interview. It's strongly recommended that the selectmen's liaison to the board, commission, committee, and council in which the vacancy exists have the opportunity to participate in the interview process. All provisions of the open meeting law shall be upheld. So, there you go.
So, are you suggesting a change or no?
No.
You just...
It's stated right there that...
A clarification, it's already there.
That we should be invited to the board when they're interviewing clients to come in. That way, it saves a lot of time and energy.
It would alleviate a lot of...
And that's a, that's a step if we decide to keep that here. That's a step we need to follow.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, without objection from the board, we're going to insert select board.
Okay, yes, thank you. Instead of selectmen's liaison, select board.
Do I have...
Thank you.
Well, do we have to, it's a policy?
No, it's, it's part of what's already transpired.
Should have been correct, okay.
We're just getting caught up.
And then we should insert something to do with associate members if...
I, so I put, I put a stab at it.
Can you say where you are?
What's that?
Where are you in the document?
I'm not anywhere, actually. This is an insert regarding the associate members. Because I, again, they've just been, they were left off. And again, it may only pertain to the zoning board in this case, but unless we have a...
Con-con.
Con-con.
Yeah, con-...
Do they have many?
They have associates.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Because we appoint.
They do.
Right.
So, and I, so I wrote, if said board or committee has associate members, those associate members shall be considered as applicants and shall be evaluated as...
Do you just want to say that they get preference?
Preference, yeah.
Yeah, I, because I, I wrote a bunch of my notes, and I just kept on circling back. So, associate members would have preference?
When there's an opening.
First consideration, perhaps.
First consideration? And maybe that, that could be added is like a, it's section, what, 3B?
Is it preference or first write or refusal to consider the seat?
I, I think...
I guess, I guess difference being, for me, is preference, like, you know, shouldn't you still go through the interview process? And I would assume if they've been on there for a while, that they would have a leg up on anybody just coming around. But, you know, your first write or refusal to say, no, I don't want it, I like being an associate member, afforded that, and then, you know, the rest, it's essentially, it comes down to, you know, the interview.
In theory, they wouldn't be in front of you if they didn't express an interest.
Right, exactly, exactly.
But I think preference still, I mean, we still have, it's...
We still have to...
...purview to, to make the decision.
To approve, we still have to approve the recommendation of the board.
Right. So, I mean, I'm, I'm good with either, you know, it's a play on words if... Does...
Yeah, I'm not arguing.
Huh?
It's getting late, man.
I have something I'd like to add. I have something I would like to add on page three.
Do we want to just finish up?
I thought we were good with that, sorry.
No, I mean, what did you...
I'm good with that.
What was the...
Leave it as is.
It was consideration or preference? What does the board feel?
Consideration, consideration.
Consideration.
I'm good with that.
So, so do I have a, do I have to make a motion for adding?
Well, I, I think I would wait until you get all of the language changes down and then incorporate them into the...
Into the next meeting?
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, what do you mean by consideration? Because you're considering everybody. Are they receiving any preference? And I'm not trying to keep everybody late here, it's just...
Yeah, you are.
I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what your intent is because we're going to try to have this drafted for your approval at the next meeting, which may be difficult at this point.
So, associate members would have, would be considered to have preference?
If, if it's...
Or, or, or special consideration?
I guess, I guess what I'm trying to find out from the board is, let's hypothetically say you've got an associate member, and that person expresses an interest. Does the board want to interview other candidates?
No.
Or do you want to go directly to the associate member? And then if you reject the associate member for whatever reason, then you can go on to somebody else. Is that what you want, or do you want to...
Yes, I think.
Or do you want to have the associate member come before you in front of other candidates who have expressed an interest? Yes.
So, associate members...
Only if they...
No, I want, I want other members to be able to voice their, put their voice in the, in their, in the conversation as well. You don't want to miss somebody who's a very well-qualified individual just because somebody served on, on a, as an alternate.
So, then we're going to go with consideration?
Yes.
And we're going to...
Associate members to have first consideration.
Preference, or, or never inserted, I should say. Right?
I'm too tired.
Associate members to have first consideration?
Yes.
First interview.
Is that good?
About it. And others, I think, I think if you miss out on somebody who wants that position...
Yeah, you know what I suggest? I suggest very strongly that each one of you come to the next meeting, which is on Monday, with specific language that you want inserted. Bring it in writing. It'll be a public document because anything in front of the board is public, but we will take whatever you provide us and incorporate that into the policy, and then bring a draft back to you for you to review. And you can either amend it, revise it, you can do whatever you want with it.
That's good.
There you go.
Because otherwise, we're going to be here until midnight.
Exactly.
What's wrong with that? I'm good. Are we keeping you up?
Yes. With all due respect, Mr. Chair.
All right, is everybody good with the board with that? Okay, so, we'll just have some clarity, and Michaela might actually have one that's already cleaned up, so, all right, so we'll go on to...
Liaison reports.
Liaison reports.
The Harvard Management Committee had a great meeting at New Seabury.
Nice.
It was very well-attended, a lot of participation, a lot of good data. So, that was on Thursday. There's also an opening, our open house at Dino's tomorrow for his sushi bar, 5:30 to 7:00, if anyone can attend.
Oh, it's Wednesday.
Oh, I, I apologize. Thank you, Mackenzie. It is Wednesday.
Thank you, Mackenzie, because I would have been there.
That would have been so bad. Thank you.
All right, any other liaison? Not water quality updates? Thank you, everybody, seriously. I, I seriously was excited about what happened today, so...
On a very personal note, thank you for making the decision tonight. I, I didn't want to rush you, but by you doing it tonight, you give us a little bit of latitude to work with GHD, so thank you.
We're here to make your job easy.
Well, and thank you for all your hard work moving this board.
Let us know if you need any other votes to supplement support.
Town manager updates?
Nothing.
What?
Nothing that can't wait.
I was waiting all night.
Request for supplemental support.
Nothing that can't wait.
And we don't have executive session, so I guess a motion to adjourn, but maybe we could talk about something else. Motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes?
No.
That's it?
Tonight, you stay here.
Meeting continues.